Broadband services were looked at very closely in the assessment. That seems to be the service class that everyone's interested in, for good reason. You know, broadband mainly due to its importance as an economic engine and also a staple of everyday For most people, it's considered an essential service, much like telephone is and was for the last 50 or 60 years. So today, so too is broadband. As shown in the table, broadband services provided over many different wired and wireless platforms. And again, the adoption rates will vary. This is where we see the most swing. The assessment looked at, you know, we didn't just focus on high-speed broadband. We looked at the availability of broadband in the four different speeds, even at 200 kilobits per second, 3 megabits per second, which was the old standard, or actually it was up to 6 megabits, 25 megabits per second, which is now the current federal standard, and 100 megabits per second, because that's where we see, you know, really the definition of high-speed broadband, you know, gets to nowadays, and who knows what it'll be in the future. Some of the observations included in the assessment, you know, we have great broadband everywhere, but for 5% of rural consumers, mostly rural consumers, have no access to modern high-speed networks at all. And also, much of upstate New York doesn't have access to speeds at or above that 100 megabit per second target. So similar to the issues we saw in the video market, consumer interest in broadband now is not only the expansion of modern networks, but the modernization of services and the need for increased speeds. As for regulatory highlights of broadband, you know, it's pretty clear that broadband is not regulated by the Public Service Commission. There's been some regulatory movement at the federal level with the Open Internet Access rules, but the oversight is exclusively federal. So, you know, I'll talk a little bit about that. The federal government has precluded price regulations of broadband services by states. What they have done historically, though, is look at ensuring fair access to the internet by all consumers, you know, the so-called net neutrality. The FCC also continues to examine how broadband will be regulated going forward. There were aspects of the Open Internet recent order that we're very interested in, and that should be developing over the next several months as well, and will be looked at closely in the study as aggressive. So, you know, just because the PSC doesn't regulate broadband, we obviously have a big interest in it and, you know, consider ourselves a stakeholder. We think it's important that some of the, you know, same basic principles of our commission, you know, need to be carried forward with broadband. You know, obviously, there's an interest in availability and affordability, you know, to rural low-income communities where, you know, sometimes the business model doesn't reach that far for these communities. As for issues going forward, the PSC expects to have a big role in facilitating the expanded broadband access to these areas, in businesses and schools and libraries, certainly. You know, we work very closely with other New York state agencies, including the Broadband Program Office, to address, you know, the digital divide issues that are out there. But there's also, you know, more hands-on things that we do with regards to reducing some of the access barriers, and that includes, you know, some of the franchising, certainly leveraging the mergers. Access to polls and permitting is something that we feel is within our toolbox, so we're going to make sure that that interest is there. We obviously support the Public Service Commission. The department supports the Governor's Broadband Regime Program, which envisions investing $500 million in state funds, which combined with matching industry funds, is going to provide over $1 billion for broadband expansion. They'll be, you know, busy during this year with the grant process to get that rolling, so we're certainly interested in providing whatever assistance we can in that regard. The plan, the Governor's Plan also envisions that access rates of at least 100 megabits per second. Funding priority, we expect to be given to those delivering the highest speeds at the lowest price point. There's a target for coverage by 2018, which is pretty aggressive, but, you know, that's the vision. In certain limited cases, we realize, you know, or not we realize, I think the DPO realizes that, and the Governor's Office, that certain lower speeds of 25 megabits are probably more likely achieved in the extremely underserved or unserved areas of states or remote areas. So that was the, the assessment looked at those three service classes and networks. There's quite a bit of convergence. It's difficult to talk about any single network anymore that doesn't provide all three of these services. So we're looking to see how that convergence affects our role as regulators and our role as facilitating and enabling these advanced networks to provide these advanced services to consumers. So, to conclude, just to talk about the, a little bit about the process, we're taking a phased approach here with the study. The first phase of this proceeding has been the production of this broad factual assessment. It's taken a bit of time, but as Ken mentioned, it's a very comprehensive look at some of these issues, and we felt that a factual baseline was important because there obviously are many different opinions on how to do it, how fast to do it, how much it's going to cost. So that's where we wanted to set a good baseline to get the discussion going. The second phase of this study, which we're in right now, is identifying the issues and the concerns that are going to warrant additional study on top of the facts that are out there. It's going to be based on the input that you receive at the public statement hearings, the comments, which are, which are hopefully already coming in, but I would remind everyone that the comment date again is August 24th. And then shortly after that, we'll begin Phase Three, which envisions, you know, identifying any additional processes that are going to be needed to complete the record. That could include further hearings, technical conferences, and comments as necessary. And then finally, Phase Four, the department staff will develop the recommendations for action, not only for the commission, but for the legislature. And then we plan to seek public input on that as necessary to complete the record and move forward on some of the, some of the really needed actions that the state governments can take to further advance the networks and deliver the best service to consumers. That concludes my presentation, so I'll pass it back over to the judge.
We've got a few minutes before we start the public statement hearing. Does anybody have any questions, seeking any clarification that they need with respect to the presentation or their report? Can I see a show of hands? Okay. The lady right here in the front, would you please come over to the microphone?
I would like to know.
Excuse me. Come over to the microphone, please.
My name is Catherine Barnes. I just got here, so I'm not familiar with all your names. Mike Rowley just said something about the highest speed at the lowest price. What is the highest speed at the lowest price? And I hear, I see the first thing here is competition. What competition when everybody's merging? This is a public service. This is a public service. You're using our public, yes?
Excuse me. This is for asking clarifications. As you started, you started with asking for clarification from Mr. Rowley, and that's appropriate. You asked for clarification with respect to what is high speed. Perfectly, that's perfectly fine. My point that you missed earlier is, this is only for clarification. A public statement hearing is going to follow this, so please reserve any comments that you have for that portion of it if you wish to speak at the public statement hearing. You'll address your first question, if you just want to limit to that.
Do I get an answer?
Sure. I mean, again, this informal session is not on the record, so if you want to have your...
Why is it not on the record?
Because the public statement hearing is one that is for on the record. This is for just clarifying.
Why shouldn't everything be on the record? We're supposed to have a democracy.
Okay. Well... The public statement hearing, if you'll be patient, it'll probably start within the next 10 to 15 minutes.
And this is the camera recording?
If you please stop interrupting, you can ask your question, and you can make whatever comment you feel is appropriate with respect to this pending proceeding, but here it is just simply to ask for clarification. And if you're, if you're, what you're doing is just, you're asking for clarification, if you're making a comment rather than asking for clarification, you're taking away from someone else that may have a comment that is related to the presentation or the report.
Well, I asked a question, and I haven't gotten an answer yet.
And you will answer that first part.
The 100 megabit per second speed is the, is the speed that is envisioned by the Governor's Plan. That is, that is not, again, we don't, we don't regulate broadband, we don't regulate speeds of broadband. Currently, the FCC has set a standard of 25 megabits per second. Again, we do not regulate broadband, but we, you know, that's, that's going to be what the other state agency through, through the Governor's, through the State Economic Development Office has set that as their goal. So that's a, that's a goal. The grants are, we envision, we don't, we don't give out grants either, but their guidelines have said that the grants for building these networks, they're going to give the grants to the companies that offer the highest speeds at the lowest cost to consumers.
What is the current highest speed at the lowest cost?
Right, so I think...
See, this is the entire question.
No, no, I think it's, no, I'm trying, I'm trying to do a couple things. One is, it depends on where you live as far as the service provider that you have. You can, no, let me, let me just finish.
Your question, what's the highest at the lowest?
The highest speed that is envisioned...
I don't want you to stall long.
No, the highest speed that's envisioned is 100 megabits per second.
What is it now?
That is the goal. Right now, so if you let me finish, right now, it depends on where you live in the state. There are some areas of the state where you can call up a provider and get...
You can get 500 megabits per second files. You can get, in New York City, 300 megabits per second Time Warner, but the prices, again, that's going to fluctuate as to what the, what the speeds are.
Lowest price?
The lowest price out there, I, it's probably in the, in the study somewhere. It's probably a $10 offering. I know...
Okay, excuse me, but we've got a number of other people that are waiting, so I...
I know everybody's waiting.
There's, there's an individual right in the back that just had their hand up.
We've got a whole night. We've got a whole night. Question for question.
Answer the question.
Hold on one second. I, I think we answered the question, but again, again, there was another question in the back here. Does anyone else?
Yeah, I want a just clarification of, does the public comment date of August 24th, is that when we can comment until, or is that when we can? I just was confused by that. You said that the public comment date is August 24th. Does that mean that we have until the 24th of August to put in our comments?
Right, so, okay, I just... So the deadline is August 24th?
The deadline, that's all I, that's all I wanted to know.
The deadline is August 24th.
Thanks.
And that's for comments on the assessment?
Right.
Or the case itself, or the initial comment?
There's another hand on the left-hand side. Is it, is an individual coming down? Anyone else have any other question? You, sir, would you stand up, please?
Richard Lewis from Community Board 12 in Manhattan. Just want a clarification on your commitment in terms of the public service law and consumer protection, quality of service quality, and your merging reporting. According to your report, you say you're not exercising this. The statement on broadband situation seemed to be a little different, so could you clarify exactly and precisely your role, either what you have now or what you continue doing? And the reason I'm asking the question is, consumers are confused with filing a complaint if their network goes, if their service goes down, and so that does present a problem when they're shuffled back and forth. So I just need a clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, for telephone service, obviously, we, we take consumer complaints, and we can effectuate the resolution of those complaints. For video services, we will take complaints as well and forward them to the video providers. For broadband, we, we don't have the authority to effectuate or resolve a consumer complaint, but certainly will forward them on to either the FCC or even the Attorney General, depending on what type, what the complaint is about.
Mike, specifically, I'm talking about lifeline services. You used to have that situation, but now you seem not to have it in terms of seniors who have a complaint, who've never received notices, and suddenly their lifeline services cut off.
No, no, we, so for voice, for lifeline service, the commission has jurisdiction. We take complaints. So if you have constituents that have experienced termination of service and they're a lifeline service customer, they should be calling the Public Service Commission.
The answer that I got from the PSC was that the federal government now chooses and screens lifeline services, and as a result, it was taken away from the PSC. In addition, our offices has received complaints that we did file for lifeline services disconnect, and there were no responses from your organization. So that's why I raised that question.
Sure, and we, you know, we're tonight's over. We should get your information, and we'll get our, a consumer advocate, Michael Corso, is the head of our office of consumer services, and we should definitely hook you up with him, because that is not correct. We do take complaints with respect to lifeline service.
So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Anyone in the back? Okay, sir, would you come up for me? I'm trying to shade out the light here because I can't see the background.
Could you put up the slide and talk about different phases?
Sorry, the different phases, yes.
Yes. Phase Four, right, where you're going to develop the recommendation. Often times, there's a disconnect between what the public warns and actually what the recommendations become. What formula or what parameters are you going to use to sift through the information that you get from these public hearings and the online sources and the phone polling to determine what your recommendations are going to be and who are you going to report your recommendations to?
Okay, so what we end up doing is, there's usually a team of people who take all the comments that have come in, either in writing or electronically or through the hotline, and we put a summary together, and we should be on, look at that summary to develop what we think the recommendations should be. Those recommendations are made, they would be made in a public way, in a public docket, and then that would then be put out for public comment. So you'd have, this isn't the only time you have to put comments in. Comment early, comment often, is what some people say, and this is true here. So you put your first round of comments in on factual assessment. The notice has questions of what we want to hear about. It doesn't limit the scope of your comments. We'll summarize those, we'll come up with recommendations. There may be additional process in there, like a hearing or a technical conference. After that, we're going to issue a recommendation. I say "we" staff. This is the staff side and the commission side, right? So staff will come up with a recommendation. Some of the recommendations may be some things that the commission can do, some may be things that others will have to take up and champion, but that we support. You'll have an opportunity then to comment on those recommendations before any final action, if it's available to the commission to take.
And who is the staff? Who would actually be on the committee that would actually be sifting through it? Is there a finite number of people determined?
Um, no, we have staff. So what we do is, we assemble a multidisciplinary staff. So right here, we have Pat, who's from the Office of Academy and Finance. He's a financial analyst. Mike is from the Office of Telecommunications. We have consumer services specialists who look at the consumer, the service quality issues, the lifeline issues that we just talked about. We have the legal side, who will look at the jurisdictional boundaries that we have to work in, as far as just identifying what actions the commission can take. So we have a number of people that get assigned to this. We have economists, so we have a pretty good, robust team that will work on this. The key here, I think, is that everything is going to be public. It'll be in that public docket, so if you, you know, get really good at using what we call our document management matter system, and you put in the number that we put up on the screen, and it's right there, you can get everybody else's comments.
I noticed that you had mentioned that somebody's going to be there that's going to look at the data from consumers, but who is going to be there to represent the consumer at the table?
So we have an Office of Consumer Services, who's headed by Michael Corso, who's been designated by the chair as the consumer advocate. Michael's been an advocate in the low-income, moderate-income communities for over 30 years in the regulatory field. He has a group of consumer advocates that he meets with on a weekly basis. They talk about a variety of issues. The Consumer Council is made up of AARP, the Public Utility Law Project, the Utility Intervention Unit, the Department of State. So we have formal consumer council that we meet with on a regular basis through Michael Corso, and your comments. Your comments feed into it. We summarize them, we digest them, and we try to respond to them as best we can.
And finally, so once this report is made, who do you specifically submit it to, and what impact will it actually have into really balancing the field for the consumer in particular?
So, sure, so we're going to do, we're going to develop this through to a recommendation point, and the recommendations that we make, as we talked about, will first be made to the commission with respect to things that we think they have the power to address. It will be put out in the public. There may be things that the commission doesn't necessarily have the totality of responsibility to address. It may be legislative ideas that come out of this, and it may be communications out to the federal government, who has jurisdiction over things like broadband. So it's going to go, nobody's going to be left untouched, probably. It's going to go to a variety of people as far as, here's what we think that should be done.
We have time for one more comment? There you are. Would you step to the microphone, please?
Hi, thank you. My, my question is for clarity on the grants. Has the committee considered the fact that they may be subsidizing a company highest speed, lowest price, to just push out a high, a temporal promotional offer, whereas in fact, now they steal customers from quality of service?
Again, we, we do not issue the grants. This, that is a part of the Broadband Program Office of the State Economic Development.
I asked if it's been considered.
I don't know. Their, their grant process is their grant process.
So, so we don't, we're not part of the broadband office. The broadband office will develop the grant program criteria, and I don't believe that's been done yet. They're working on that, but I understand...
That's fine.
I understand your question, which is, will the grants be contingent on any promise to maintain the level, the price offered?
Right.
The initial? And I, yeah, we could definitely put that forward to the broadband office.
Thank you. And one other thing, could you define a consumer? Because a consumer has changed. A consumer used to be someone was having trouble with their phone, and they weren't getting a response, and they would call the PSC, and the PSC would, would bring down the heat and, and the phone would get fixed. Since deregulation, a consumer is no longer an individual. A consumer is a quote-unquote competitor. Broadband, telco, Broadview, Windstream, Level 3, and what their customers will do, will, they'll come to those companies, and they in turn will go to Verizon, who in turn, and then the PSC never hears about these outages. So I would like for you to define for me a consumer.
Well, I think for our purposes, consumers are the former, the consumer, the customer...
The individual?
The individual. We do also have quite a bit of tariff and regulations for the regulated, I'm sorry, for the wholesale, well, we consider the wholesale customers of the incumbent provider. So who they, who also purchase services from, from the incumbent provider usually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we will commence the public statement hearing.
As many of you know from a prior event, I'm an administrative law judge, and I've been assigned to conduct the public statement hearing this evening. With me here this evening is the Chair of the Public Service Commission, Audrey Zippelman. Commissioner Sayer is also here. I expect that he will be here momentarily. He's in the building.
Is he this evening?
The purpose of this, this event is to obtain your comments, your input on the report that was, that was filed by the Department of Public Service Staff, was issued on June 23rd. You've heard, many of you have heard a presentation earlier with respect to that report, and this is the point at which you can provide your input, your comments. Obviously, one of the things that you've heard before is that the public input is critical, that we get the public input so that a comprehensive view of state of telecommunications in New York can be developed. And I don't know who's talking on the telephone, but I ask that if you have to take a telephone call, please do it so outside.
Outside.
Excuse me. Everyone, you know, I didn't think I'd have to suggest that people, or say that people have to silence their cell phone, but I just thought that this hearing is important enough to people that the courtesy would be extended, so people would silence their cell phones. The practice that we typically engage in is to keep a public statement hearing open for one hour. I don't think that's going to be a problem. We have over 30, hard to be 35 individuals who have signed up to speak. At this point, we're not placing a limit on the amount of time that someone is allowed to speak, but we have a time limit on the use of this building, so therefore, if we get down the road at a certain point, we may have to regroup and decide to limit the amount of time people have to speak. In conducting the public statement hearing, I'm going to be calling up speakers on the order that I have received cards. I asked, I'll indicate who the second individual is, and I ask that they obviously go, we have two separate microphones here. One individual could stay themselves at the other microphone and be ready to take, take over speaking at the, at the point that the first person concludes. In addition to oral statements, you, for those who are here, saw the slide on top. We indicated several vehicles by which people could make their comments heard. I know from dealing with public statement hearings in the past, some people cannot wait until it's their time to turn. That's not unusual. They have other commitments. Some people just don't feel comfortable speaking in public. They can submit written comments. If you're one of those people, you can submit written comments. You can call in on our opinion line. It's not the mechanism by which you comment that counts, it's the content of the message. I just note simply that both your comments are going to be incorporated into the record. Now, as you come forward, one of the things I'm going to ask, and we typically have to do this, is when you come forward, please speak into the microphone and speak clearly. Speak slower than I'm speaking now. I'm trying to get started with this, so that a reporter can take down what you say accurately. It's important that they get this information down. It's important that they get this information down.
Commissioner, any comments?
Sean, I, no, as I, well, for those of you who were not here at the beginning, I just wanted to reiterate my comments. And as staff said, hearing from you is very critical for us, so it's important that we understand your concerns as we deliberate and decide and focus on what to, how to make this better for all New Yorkers. So I'm very appreciative of the fact, on behalf of all the Commissioners, as well as the agency, that you all are taking time out of your days and your evening to come share with your, with us your observations. So we certainly look forward to it, and we should just get on with it, because we have a lot of people, and we want to hear from all of you.
Okay. The first speaker is going to be Herb Kushner, and David Saltynstall will be following Mr. Kushner.
Thank you for allowing me to come a distance and express my feelings. As you've mentioned, my name is Herb Kushner, and I retired on February 7th of this year after 24 years, after 24 years of service as a New York telephone, 9X, Bell Atlantic, and most recently Verizon cable splicer. I did telephone construction and cable repair right here in Manhattan. My first 10 years of tenure working for the telephone company, quality was stressed above all else. However, in the last 10 to 15 years, the parameters by which craft and management are evaluated relate only to speed. There are no longer any parameters at all that are set to the measure of quality. Verizon has a department called Pressure that installs equipment to force compressed air into cables in order to keep water out. In the mid-'90s, the company beefed up the Pressure Department and expanded. That investment resulted in a tremendous drop in the number of cable failures and a huge drop in service disruptions therefore resulted. 10 or so years ago, Verizon shrunk the Pressure Department and stopped maintaining the system. They had something that was proven to work well, but they weren't forced to maintain it, so they didn't. As a result, customers now go out of service often for months at a time. When cables did fail, we tested every wire carefully, and we didn't make very many mistakes. Most of these cables were repaired in a week or so, and we had our customers back in service in a fairly short time. Back in the early '90s, there was a huge fire inside a building on the fourth floor of a high-rise building on Wall Street. I think that it was 40 Wall Street, but it was a long time ago, and I can't remember exactly. The fire occurred early on Saturday morning, and the entire building was out of service. New York Telephone brought in cops, food, drinks, and snacks, and we worked 24 hours a day, all weekend. By 9:00 AM Monday morning at the opening of business, we had restored thousands and thousands of lines with an error rate of less than 1%. If we were able to restore our customers' service so quickly then, I have to ask, why is Verizon not doing the same thing now? I would like to show the following examples that I personally experienced over the past few years. One, in December of 2013, I began work at a cable failure at Fifth Avenue and 75th, 78th Street. On April 17th, five months later, my colleagues were still working to put those customers back in service, and they were still working when I was sent elsewhere to start work on the next big emergency. Five months is too long for Verizon's customers to go without telephones. Two, from April 18th to May 29th, 2014, I worked on a cable failure at Seventh Avenue and 56th Street, right next to Carnegie Hall, a place I love to go. It took six weeks to repair those cables because they were buried, and it took four weeks just to make them accessible. Proper maintenance would have prevented this. The failure left hundreds of businesses and residential customers with no telephone for a period of several months. Number three, on February 26th, 2014, I was sent to 47th Street and Fifth Avenue, the jewelry district, where our cables had failed for the second time in one year. What I saw shocked me, and I hope that my description will shock you. The streets were lined with armored cars, not the little ones that we see every day going from the supermarket to the bank. I'm talking about huge tractor-trailer armored cars. Got to find my place here. There were uniformed security guards with guns and scurrying all over the block twice a day. The failure once again knocked out all the alarm systems and left them that way for months. So businesses and storekeepers had no choice but to take their goods, secure it with armored car companies, and they unloaded the trucks every morning, and they reloaded the trucks every night. I don't even want to think about what that must have cost. One month later, the failure was still not repaired, and many lines were still not working. Trouble is, tickets persisted for many months. When I left the company, a year later, in February of 2015, 47th Street had failed again for the third time in a year and a half, and working on those repairs was my final assignment. Verizon has continued to apply Band-Aids rather than fixing the problems. I'm both proud and thankful for my many years with The Phone Company. I feel privileged to have been able to make contributions at 40 Wall Street, and also at the Police Academy and the World Trade Center site in the days on and then following September 11th, 2001. In spite of that, however, there have been many times that I felt embarrassed by my company's lack of concern for its customers. I hope from my statement that you can feel the passion that I still feel for my craft and for my customers. Verizon knows how to solve these problems. We know how to solve these problems. How to do about any company to treat its customers so poorly by letting its facilities decay to this extreme? Clearly, the culture has changed, and not for the better. I urge the Public Service Commission to compel Verizon to show the same kind of concern and to make the same kind of effort that we showed at 40 Wall Street and in the days during and after the World Trade Center disaster. Thank you.
The next speaker behind Mr. Saltynstall will be Kenneth Percy. So, Mr. Percy, if you, Keith Percy, I'm sorry. If you'll just wait right there by the microphone. Okay, Mr. Saltynstall?
Good evening. My name is David Saltynstall, and I'm the Assistant Controller for Policy for the City of New York. I'm here tonight testifying on behalf of New York City Controller Scott Stringer. I want to thank Chairwoman Zibelman and other members of the Commission for visiting New York to hear about a topic of vital importance to us all, and that is the state of our city's communication infrastructure. As members of the Commission know, the last time the PSC embarked on a comprehensive review of the telecommunications market in New York, it was 2006. For those too young to remember, 2006 was the age before iPhones. In 2006, a little-known company called YouTube had just gone live, and only 15% of U.S. cellphone users had a smartphone in their pocket. Today, it is indisputable that the Internet has become the fourth utility of the modern age. And yet, it is also indisputable that over the last decade, New Yorkers have witnessed steep declines in service, affordability, and quality for telephone, television, and Internet service, even as prices have inexorably risen. No matter how you measure it, New York is lagging behind the nation, and in many cases the world, in the quality of our information services, and that's bad for our city, bad for our economy, and bad for our future. These issues are particularly acute within our five boroughs, where Verizon, the city's only fiber-optic network operator, has bypass customers in need of a competitive option for fast reliability. Despite a 2008 agreement with New York City, Verizon has failed to meet its commitments to extend its fiber network. They say the job is done, the job is not done. Not when entire residential and commercial neighborhoods are without access to the speed and reliability of 40 by a high-tech fiber network. The Controller believes that Verizon must recommit itself to expanding and maintaining its networks by adequately investing in its existing networks and maintaining a workforce equal to the task of connecting every city. This is not just about one company keeping its promises, though. It is about the future of New York City's economic competitiveness. A recent report published by the Controller's Office found that citywide, 27% of households lack broadband Internet at home in the city of New York. In some neighborhoods, that number climbs up to almost 50%. I repeat, in some of our neighborhoods, 50% of residents are not able to access high-speed broadband, either because of cost or because of access. That's what the Census data shows. Our city cannot afford to stall out on the information superhighway, especially as our competitors in Tokyo, Hong Kong, and even Chattanooga, Tennessee, enjoy Internet connections that are, in many cases, 20 times faster for the same price or less. Again, I want to thank, and I know the Controller wants to thank, the Public Service Commission for holding these hearings. They are, they are vital meetings, but we also urge the Commission to reformulate outdated regulatory policy to meet the needs of 21st century consumers, and to reexamine how state regulation can foster a more affordable and competitive marketplace. We have submitted to you a formal testimony that is longer than what I have said here, as well as a report we have done on broadband access in the city of New York, and we will obviously also submit that as part of the formal record electronically. So thank you again, members of the Commission, for your time.
Behind Mr. Percy will be Mike Baxter. Mr. Baxter, will you please step over by the other microphone? Ladies and gentlemen, if you keep the applause down, what is it, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
All right. My name is Keith Purse, and I'm the President of Communications Workers of America Local 1101. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to testify before you. Local 1101 represents more than 3,300 Verizon workers in Manhattan and the Bronx. We build and maintain the copper and fiber networks that serve residents and businesses throughout both boroughs. We're fighting to protect our jobs at a time when Verizon seems intent on destroying them. We're proud of the work we do, and we believe all New Yorkers should have access to quality telephone service, affordable high-speed Internet, and competition. The PSC's policies have a tremendous impact on our jobs and our customer service quality. Today I would like, tonight I would like to talk about the Verizon FiOS build in the city. Verizon FiOS is a state-of-the-art product which provides a direct fiber connection to customers' homes and businesses. In the 2008 franchise agreement that Verizon signed with New York City, the company agreed to make FiOS available to all New York City residents. Last year, Verizon stated it had completed its obligations under the franchise agreement, but residents throughout the city report that they have repeatedly requested FiOS and can't get it. In many instances, the company simply says it's not available and won't provide an estimated date as to if or when it will be available. In some other areas, FiOS is available in some buildings on the block, but not others. In other areas, it is not available for blocks at a time. Some neighborhoods have been left behind altogether. For instance, there are very few buildings in the Washington Heights inward area with FiOS. That entire neighborhood has essentially been left out of the build with Time Warner as tenants' only option for truly high-speed Internet service. The Alexander Hamilton Houses, the St. Nicholas Houses, the Manhattanville Houses, the General Grant Houses, and the Randall Houses, none of these uptown housing projects have FiOS. In Chinatown, there are entire blocks from Houston to Canal, Lafayette to Essex Streets, where FiOS is not available. Residents at Gateway Plaza, next to the World Trade Center, a complex with more than 1,700 units, can't get FiOS. At London Terrace, the residential complex that spans an entire city block between 23rd and 24th Streets, between 9th and 10th Avenues, the buildings on each of the four corners have FiOS, but none of the buildings in between can get it. That's six out of 10 of the buildings in that complex that can't get FiOS. In the Bronx, there is a much more FiOS built in the East Bronx than in the West Bronx. Neighborhoods like the University Heights area, Mount Eden, and Mount Haven, for instance, all have very low FiOS penetration rates. At Co-op City, the largest cooperative housing development in the world with more than 15,000 units, cannot get FiOS. Repeated attempts by Co-op City residents to get Fire, Verizon to bring FiOS to the development have been unsuccessful. That's just to name a few. On June 18th, the New York City Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications completed an audit of Verizon's compliance with the franchise agreement. They found an alarming failure on the part of Verizon to deliver on its franchise agreement with the city. Specifically, the city found Verizon has not run fiber through enough of the city's residential neighborhoods to deliver on its commitments. Verizon's own records indicate that service is unavailable at certain residential addresses despite company claims that it can deliver service to all New Yorkers who want FiOS. Verizon has failed to consistently document service requests. Where Verizon has accepted requests for service, it has consistently failed to respond to service requests within the required six, six- and 12-month timeframes. DUIT's audit reveals that 75% of the more than 40,000 requests from buildings that had not previously been wired for a FiOS service have been outstanding for over a year. Despite clear requirements in the franchise agreement, Verizon has only tracked complaints from actual subscribers and has not tracked complaints and inquiries from prospective customers. Verizon failed to cooperate with the city's audit of the FiOS rollout. Throughout the course of the DUIT audit, the company significantly delayed or failed to provide access to the information the auditors needed. These are very serious accusations by New York City's government. They reflect what customers across the city are reporting. They want FiOS and can't get it. CWA members build, install, and maintain the FiOS network. A complete FiOS build, which would put Verizon in compliance with the franchise agreement, would protect and create jobs, and also provide competition for all New York City consumers. We need those good jobs. Our families need them. New York needs them. And New Yorkers need the affordable, reliable, high-speed Internet and phone service that those jobs will bring. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
The next speaker behind Mr. Baxter will be Robert Drake. Mr. Drake, if you'd move to the center microphone. Mr. Baxter?
Good evening. My name is Michael Baxter, and I am the vice president of the Communication Workers of America Local 1101. I thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm testifying on behalf of CWA Local 1101 because good jobs are vital to our members and the community. We are fighting to protect and create good jobs at Verizon. Conversely, Verizon continues to eliminate jobs despite posting massive profits. We are also fighting for all New Yorkers to have reliable and affordable high-speed Internet and telephone service. The PSC's policies and enforcement of those policies are vital to us achieving those goals. Verizon has not only failed to build out the FiOS network, they are in the process of abandoning the copper network. Abandoning the copper network not only destroys good jobs, but it also drives away loyal customers. Despite the PSC's claims to the contrary, Verizon's service for customers on the copper network is substandard. Verizon's customers on the copper network often remain out of service for days, weeks, and sometimes months. Customers who are not part of the PSC's core customers cannot get their phones fixed within 24 hours as required. Even the high-priority core customers often remain out of service long past the 24-hour mark and are forced to make repeated calls to Verizon to inquire about the status of their repair. Poor service has become the norm for copper customers. After Hurricane Sandy, Verizon cut out almost all of the copper cables in the Broad Street Central Office rather than repair them and restore service. These cables, along with the rest of the copper network, were already in a state of disrepair when the storm hit. That's one reason so many cables failed and the impact of the storm was so great. Verizon had already given up on routine maintenance, replacement of deteriorated cables, and an air pressure system that would have protected these cables in the event of any storm. We are often forced to repair cables that should be replaced and temporarily fix problems that become much worse over time. New copper cables are rare, and we are often forced to put Band-Aids on cables that are over a half a century old. Some of these cables even had old lead sheaths on them. Verizon cut the cables at Broad Street in Lower Manhattan long before they had an alternative for their customers. Customers were either forced to wait for FiOS or use inferior wireless products such as VoiceLink. VoiceLink only delivers voice service, so customers are out of luck if they need fax service, Internet service, or even Life Alert. Verizon currently plans on removing all the copper cables at the 79th Street Central Office on the east side of Manhattan. This move will have a negative impact on a highly residential area and will greatly reduce the level of service for customers in that area. Verizon's neglect of the copper service has gone on for years, and many customers are resigned to the fact that when there is inclement weather, they will have service issues for extended periods. Slow Internet, staticky phone calls, or no service at all are common. Verizon is also sending letters to their copper customers informing them that if they don't let Verizon install equipment in their homes and switch to the FiOS network, they will close their account and remove their service altogether. FiOS is a great product, and we want to keep building it, but Verizon should not be requiring customers to give up existing working service or be forced to go to a competitor. The PSC used to be feared and respected by Verizon and their management team. The PSC had quality standards, and they enforced them, which in turn protected the customers from issues they now face. Since the PSC has largely stopped enforcing these standards, Verizon has stopped meeting them. Verizon has put their shareholders before the customers. Loss of service is not just an inconvenience, it's also a health and safety issue. The PSC standard is that 80% of telephones that are out of service must be repaired within 24 hours. Needless to say, we are far from that standard. The PSC should compel Verizon to adequately maintain the copper network and ensure that as the transition to fiber is made, customers still have quality service. This would protect the jobs of the hard-working men and women who build and maintain the network every day and would provide customers with the quality service they deserve. Thank you very much.
After Mr. Drake, the speaker will be Patrick Welch. So, Mr. Welch, if you could move to the other microphone. Mr. Drake, are you ready to go?
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Robert Drake. I live in the Bronx, and I guess I do have a choice of FiOS, but otherwise, it's cable vision opt-online. The cost has gone up. I cut my cable, I don't have television anymore, I just have Internet. But the cost used to be $50 a month, and it went up in six months to $55 a month, and now it's up to $60. I consider it to be outrageous for the service that I've got. Every once in a while, my service went out. The last time it went out, I went through their automated service, which actually works most of the time, which talks you through a repair, but this time it didn't work, and I called over three days, and it turns out, they finally said, "Well, we've determined that you have a leak in your apartment, and therefore, we won't turn your service back on until somebody can come in." Well, I'm retired now because I lost my job, and I've got boxes all over the place, and I can't really let people in because the cable's underneath the boxes. So, right now, I'm paying $60 a month, and I'm using the Wi-Fi that comes in through my window, the same neighborhood Wi-Fi that you can get if you're sitting in a park and open it up, open up your laptop, and that service is great, except for the fact, not much comes down the pipe if you're sitting there. Sometimes, it's actually, I switch from their opt-online connection to my cellphone because I can't get anything to come down the pipe. So, if I lived in Riverdale, I understand I'd actually have a choice of companies, and Marble Hill, I guess, is actually part of Manhattan, but they evidently have a choice there, too. But I'm not satisfied with the choices that I have, I'm not with the service that I've got, and the price is just outrageous, particularly when I'm looking at competitors even in the city. I understand that they offer new customers a cheaper rate, about half my rate, maybe even less, but they also charge a monthly rate for the rental of the equipment and an installation charge, which they didn't charge me. I just connected to what was my TV cable, but nothing in my apartment has changed, so I don't know why I'm suddenly leaking something. These little cables can go bad, and I'm thinking, I don't know, it's a copper-core cable, I don't really see when nothing's happened, why that should be the case. But I really, I know you don't regulate price and all this other stuff, and broadband is outside, but it really shouldn't be. There should be somebody local you can go to to get these things fixed, you know? Eventually, I'm going to get the boxes into storage, and maybe I'm going to get my cable back, where right now, if you can imagine, I have the unsafe way of going through their Wi-Fi. I don't have a secure connection if I'm making credit card purchases and that sort of thing, but that's the only thing I've got. So, thank you for your time.
The speaker behind Mr. Welch will be Joe Plotkin. Mr. Plotkin, if you'll hold the microphone. Mr. Welch?
Yes, good evening. My name is Patrick Welch, I'm retired from Verizon, and I spent 36 years with the phone company. I was a cable splice from Manhattan, and I installed payphones in the Bronx, which was an ancient endeavor now. When I worked at Verizon, the PSC was powerful and feared by management. Any hint of a PSC inspection in the manager's area sent them scurrying to have us check every possible problem. In the public phone department, if you were asked to work on Sunday, we knew that the PSC was coming out on Monday. But now, because of deregulation, the lowering of standards and fines, that is not the case anymore. New York State telecommunications customers have minimal protection against telephone and cable provider abuses. I'm a leader of my union's retiree organization, so I have contact with many older New York residents. I would say 90% of seniors still have copper-lined service. It is cheaper than cable, they feel. By past performance, it is more reliable. In most cases, service was restored in 24 to 48 hours. Many seniors receive Internet service on DSL over the copper line. Loss of service does not affect only their voice line. Over the past five years, service has changed dramatically. When customers lose service, they are not told service will be restored in 24 to 48 hours, they are told three to four weeks or whenever. Many customers, particularly seniors, still rely solely on their copper lines to stay in touch with their family and others. Having no service for three or four weeks is not uncommon, and it is unnecessary and a blatant violation of Verizon's mandate. Unnecessary because they have the workforce to maintain their infrastructure, and blatant because they are consciously reducing that workforce. Since Verizon has moved on to wireless world, they seem to think that everyone else has, and if not, too bad for those that did not. Others will have spoken about Verizon's FiOS buildup. There are many frustrated citizens who would like to have the choice of FiOS and cannot get it. There are endless commercials on Verizon pushing their products to create a demand, and then they are told, "Sorry, you can't have it." This is not only a problem in New York City but across the state. In a recent letter to the editor of a local Westchester newspaper, a Croton Village trustee wrote, and I quote, "Many residents, myself included, are frustrated by the lack of options when it comes to telecommunications service in our village, especially troubling is the lack of FiOS franchise that would provide an alternative to cable vision. Unfortunately," still quoting, "unfortunately, Verizon, as a matter of corporate policy, will not extend its FiOS-TV network to Croton or anywhere else. Just last week, one of the Verizon lawyers wrote to the village that, quote, 'Verizon remains focused on meeting its commitments to the municipal municipalities with secured video franchises and has no plans to expand FiOS in New York,' unquote. The PSC competition plan is not working. Verizon is a private corporation, has the right to sell its FiOS product where it wants. Although I believe all cable companies providing service in New York State should be mandated to service the whole state, but Verizon is also a public utility, but a mandate to provide voice service to all. It seems to be providing voice into that video to select group at the expense of the rest of, and providing core service for those that are still on copper. As already mentioned, in New York City, Verizon has been dragging its feet on spreading FiOS citywide. A perfect example, again, is Co-op City in the Bronx, the largest co-op in the world. 43,000 people have access to only one cable provider in a city that has a franchise agreement with Verizon. Many attempts have been made to encourage Verizon into an agreement with the Co-op Board, but local Verizon management has no interest. If New York State is going to maintain an Empire State status, attract the businesses and talented people, high-speed broadband is a must. This state has the capabilities to be a leader in technology and information, but it will not happen if our broadband services mismatch groupings of citizens and neighborhoods receiving drastic differences in broadband service and access. I encourage this commission to enforce their mandates on record and push for a new legislation that will force providers to expand their networks to serve all of New York State equally.
Following Mr. Plotkin will be Bruce Kushner. Mr. Kushner, over on the side of the area. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Plotkin.
Good evening, my name is Joe Plotkin, and I've been involved in providing broadband in New York City and now in upstate New York since 1998. I respectfully disagree with the report that indicates there's sufficient competition in broadband, pointing out things like satellite are not sufficient in any way for doing work at home with a shallow upstream pathway. Using a MiFi connection on a mobile platform which has data caps and onerous fees is not sufficient broadband for the home. You can't send large files, you can't, you also don't know in that situation what you're getting when you click on a link and what you're paying for, what you're not paying for. So, I would, the first thing I would ask is that you recognize that the competition is one of the ways to regulate the behavior of the Verizons of the world, and the incumbency, we remember that the incumbency was built on 100 years of a regulated monopoly, okay? So, if you've taken away their public obligations and let them keep the assets, the public is who loses, and in this... And the second point, which is related to that, is you can't exist as an economic entity, whether you're a small business or an individual, and survive in this society without broadband going forward. We all, that may have been debated over the last 10 years, but that's pretty settled now. Everybody recognizes that, it's the next utility. If we, if that is the case, then how do we move past having one or two choices in a marketplace and letting the tyranny of that shallow choice dictate how we have a communications infrastructure in this country, right? We need a way, whether it's, whether it's separating a Verizon so that, you know, Mike Rowley, you remember early in, back in the day, we were discussing before the hearing, how using unbundled network elements, we were supposed to provide competition in this marketplace with some of the DSL providers? They're all gone. All the independent ISPs that existed as an industry are all gone because of the heavy, the lack of the ability to regulate this marketplace. And now, we're left with the future of our economic performance in America being held hostage by a few players. So, I would ask you to reevaluate the way you look and regulate these large companies and see if you can find some strength in that and some other way to go at it, because the way you're doing it right now, it seems insufficient for what we need going forward. Thank you.
Behind Mr. Bruce, Mr. Kushner is going to be Robert Mastor. Mr. Mastor, if you could take the center microphone, please. Mr. Kushner, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Bruce Kushner. I've been a telecommunications analyst for 33 years, and a lot of you know my work. I invented and rolled out the first three-digit dialing, like 311 New York, I did 511 in 1992. New Networks Institute also was the, is now consortium of experts, auditors, and lawyers, and we also wrote the Pulp Report, the Public Utility Law Project Report known as IT's All- interconnected, which is the basis of the Connect New York Coalition's part dealing with what they call, sorry, this allocation of funds. I'm going to talk about the study as well briefly, but let me just give you some history that's missing from the study. 2006, Verizon went to New York State and said, "Can we need a rate increase?" And the reason we need a rate increase is because of two reasons. One, we have massive deployment of fiber optics, and we have massive losses. Let me talk about the losses first. Verizon New York in the year 2014 lost $2.58 billion and has been losing $2 billion each year, and they claim it's because local service is unprofitable. We've discovered that local service has been manipulated, and all the books have been manipulated, and all the major expenses have been dumped into the cost of local service, into the public, which telephone networks. Simple example, in the year 2014, Verizon was at Verizon Corporate, dumped $2.6 billion of expenses, corporate expenses, into the state utility, of which 1.5 billion, which is the majority of the numbers, was dumped into the term "local service." Local service only made $1.4 billion that year, so basically, local service lost money because corporate was able to dump expenses. The expenses they dumped, marketing expenses, advertising expenses, lawyers' fees, and PR. We're talking about things, if it's a copper network, there is no advertising. Why are they paying an extra $111 million in the year 2014? There are no, there are no corporate expenses like lawyers because basically, they're not even building the network anymore. So, what happened was, is from the year 2006 to 2014, they were supposed to also do massive deployment of fiber optics, okay? Well, they started rolling out FiOS, and FiOS, the reason why they were able to dump the expense into local service and charge local customers for this is because you, the state commission, decided that FiOS was going to be a telecommunications service Title II common carriage based on the year 1934, the Act of 1934, i.e., it's part of the state utility networks that are supposed to be upgraded, i.e., the cost of those services was supposed to be going to everybody because they are Title II common carriage. You weren't, they weren't supposed to pick and choose. However, however, what happened was, around 2010, 2011, Verizon says, "You know, why don't we just take everybody who's working on the wires to the homes, the FiOS, and move them to do the wires to the cell towers?" In fact, the majority, as most of you people will know, upstate New York, the majority of many of the staff has been moved from wiring the cities to wiring the utility... of many of the staff has been moved from wiring the cities to wiring the, wiring the wires to the cell towers. And the expense is basically, it's Title II, it's common carriage. I.e., the wires to the cell towers are part of the state utility budget. The state, the New York State AG found that 75% of the budget that was supposed to be used to fix the copper had been moved to either FiOS TV, TV is not supposed to be dumped into local service, as well as the wires to the cell towers. A billion dollars, $750 million had been diverted from fixing the wires that people use to the wires to the cell towers. So, none of this is in the report. None of it at all has been discussed. But in the report, you have a couple of things that really kind of annoyed me. The first one was, in the report it says that Time Warner Cable, triple play, is $89.99. That's the price that you're, and that Verizon's FiOS is $74.99. A whole other bill, my Time Warner bill, after a year and a half, my Time Warner bill went to $190.77. It's no longer $89.99. The state refused to go out and actually collect bills. Number two, the state hasn't done an audit of any of the, of any of the numbers. So when Verizon loses $2.58 billion, the question is just, why didn't the state investigate where the losses are coming from? The losses are coming not from local service, not from the public utility networks, but from all of the other expenses that are being dumped into the state utility. Finally, and according to undocumented, you have not examined the books for 10 years, which of course causes all these cross subsidies. So I'd like to leave with this, with this suggestion. Number one, trash the report completely and start all over again. Do audits for the report. Show that the local service, that the local service is profitable and that there wasn't enough money to build out the entire state of New York with fiber optics, but Verizon decided to dump the money, the expenses, and also move the, the construction budget into the wireless business. The wireless business has got no free ride and we're talking about billions of dollars extra. So, who's the boss of the state utility currently? The Verizon wires, because Verizon wires is deciding who will and who will not be at Verizon State New York. Thank you very much.
Following Mr. Mastor, we're going to have Alexander Goldman. Goldman, will you station yourself for the other mic.
Good evening. My name is Bob Mastor. I'm the legislative political director for Communications Workers of America, District One, members and staff of the commission, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to express my appreciation to the PSC for scheduling this hearing and the seven other, seven other hearings that are currently scheduled around the state. They offer a, an overdue but important opportunity for the public to let you know what is happening in the real world of telecommunications in New York State. My testimony is fairly long, so in the interests of time, I'm going to try to summarize certain parts, but I won't read some of the quotations perhaps that I have from the report. I'll read some parts and I'll submit it in writing later if that works. Evidently, at least two sharply divergent paths were available to the Public Service Commission's staff in developing its assessment of the impact of the commission's telecommunications policies over the last 20 years. The first approach would have been to adopt a skeptical and self-critical eye, looking hard to identify problems that have arisen in the wake of the, I'm going to put my glasses on too. Yeah, exactly right. The sweeping deregulation promulgated by the commission since the late 1990s. The opinions of a wide range of stakeholders would have been welcomed as crucial evidentiary input, helping the staff develop a transparent analysis of policy successes and failures. Hard questions would have been posed. Where have competitive markets failed? Who has been left behind? If a new telecommunications reality is emerging, what are the problems associated with the transition? What new policies are required to address these shortfalls? The second approach would be to meet privately and postpone public input until a lengthy initial assessment was finished. This analysis would assemble oblissitor statistics, mostly at a statewide rather than a regional or local level, to depict a glittering new reality of constantly improving services fueled by the emergence of a dazzling array of new technologies. Wireless and satellite products would be depicted as ensuring that virtually every New Yorker has been guaranteed a robust choice of voice, video and broadband products. Problems would be hinted at, but largely glossed over. Faith in market solutions would remain unshaken. In this approach, the PSC staff would be like an alcoholic who can't see that drinking before noon is an issue and would therefore be unable to make needed policy changes because it refuses to acknowledge it has a problem in the first place. The first approach is the one that we were promised and the one that we needed. The second approach is what we got. The staff assessment of telecommunications services, which was delivered seven weeks late and without a word of public input, concludes that pretty much everything in the New York telecommunications industry is moving in the right direction. Today's network, the report states on page three, networks are providing more advanced and more mobile services at faster speeds to consumers and supplanting traditional forms of telephone and cable television services. The report asserts that markets are robustly competitive, service is good and improving, and that New York is not just a national, but a world leader in broadband speeds. We learned, for example, that 95% of New Yorkers have access to satellite, video, internet and voice services and that many, and in many places in the state, this serves to guarantee that the competitive market standards set by both the FCC and the PSC are being met. Less prominently mentioned, however, is that after decades of such competition, less than 1% of New Yorkers use the satellite for the internet, a very expensive option and one where the most recent innovation in satellite broadband offers 12 megs down and 3 megs up. Robust competition indeed. Voice services are also depicted as highly competitive because consumers can utilize wireless and so-called over-the-top voice services like Vonage and Skype. Service quality on legacy services is described as steadily improving, but little mention is made of the fact that 92% of the 4 million traditional landlines are exempt from service quality assessment. And since the commission did not hear from actual consumers and workers, the fact that Verizon has refused to upgrade copper infrastructure for years, as you have heard in great detail tonight, thus leaving those 4 million customers subject to inadequate gerrymon repair when their service goes out, goes unmentioned. The report fails utterly to account for the actual situation on the ground for the millions who remain dependent on copper service. An absence from the report's glowing account of new over-the-top services is any serious mention of the fact that access to those services depends on the availability of high-speed wired broadband, a market in which serious problems have developed. But in fact, if you read the report very carefully and probe beneath the surface of its glowing depiction of vibrant telecommunications markets, there is ample evidence, even in the staff's assessment, of extremely serious problems, the same problems which Connect New York has urged the PSC to address directly. The starting point is a place where we agree, the staff's clear statement of the essential importance of access to high-speed broadband, which has been reiterated several times tonight. Where we part ways, however, is over the staff's rosy conclusions about how well New York's wireline services serve its residents. I quote, "The wireline broadband outlook for New York as compared to other states in the nation internationally is good and on an improving annual trajectory." This is because, staff states, "Wireline broadband competition is available to the vast majority of state residents at varying speeds." But, the staff acknowledges on page 56, that as noted in the video section of this report, "While functionally capable of providing video service, wireless broadband connections are not currently a viable option for most households' video needs and may include significant data caps at present." So it turns out that at bottom, wireless can't really substitute for wired broadband because it's too expensive and in many cases, too slow. As I mentioned earlier, less than 1% of customers get broadband from satellite for the purposes of internet. So that's not a meaningful form of broadband competition. Third, if you read closely, the staff also acknowledges the existence of a serious digital divide, as we have argued in the Connect New York Coalition. They mention in the, in the report, "A significant portion of the variation in broadband deployments are associated with variations in income and population density across the state." In other words, rich white suburbs tend to have a lot more options for high-speed wired broadband than do poorer, more of color upstate cities like Buffalo, Syracuse, Albany, Binghamton, Utica, Rome, Beacon and Newburgh. This disturbing reality is further confirmed a few paragraphs later when the staff writes, "Broadband speeds and competitive alternatives are more robust in the downstate market and in some major upstate cities," though we challenge the staff to identify the major upstate city which meets that description. And, the report acknowledges that Time Warner, quote, "Has not yet announced firm plans to increase broadband speeds in upstate New York. Cable modem network upgrades to enable faster speeds appear to be driven by population density in the presence of competitive markets." So Verizon's failure to build FiOS in upstate cities, let alone rural areas, exposes the staff's mythological argument that robust competition is driving quality and investment across the state. In fact, as Connect New York has repeatedly argued, the upstate cities, as well as the town of Brookhaven on Long Island, are currently the subject of cable monopolies, unrelieved by meaningful competition from wireless or satellite. These market failures, carefully hidden in the staff's analysis, are reflected in the omission that 4 million New Yorkers have access to broadband at very slow speeds, between 200 kilobits and 3 megabits, service that comes nowhere near meeting the standard for broadband recently established by the FCC. That's 4 million people whose children may not be able to do their homework assignments because the web access is too slow, or who may not be able to apply for jobs online because their connection gets dropped, or whose businesses cannot connect to customers with a slow DSL line. The distorted picture painted by the staff assessment is similar when we turn to voice service quality. Staff cites JD Power Raiders for 13, JD Power ratings for 13 eastern states to demonstrate that consumers are pleased with voice service options. This ridiculous snapshot of service quality from the ionosphere overlooks stark regional differences in service quality within New York State, let alone between states. And seemingly grudgingly, staff acknowledges these problems, admitting aging copper plant is an issue in both urban areas of New York where Verizon's fiber technology may run parallel to copper, as well as in rural areas where fiber deployment is less prevalent, acknowledging also that in New York City, legacy copper infrastructure in many places in such poor condition that copper failures due to weather conditions can cause long delays. Then, the staff makes a gigantic understatement. "In many instances, the migration to FiOS may not be readily available, so the company faces a difficult repair or lengthy replacement of the copper facility to serve a reduced customer base." But the problem, had there been input from the public, this would not have been mentioned in passing. It would have loomed large since we know that in many instances, for example, in every major upstate city and in virtually all of the rural areas of the state, there's no plan to make a transition to FiOS. Migration to FiOS is not an alternative. And beyond that, notwithstanding the PSC's artificially inflated service quality metrics, in these copper-only areas, the company evades its maintenance obligations every single day and has been doing so for many years. Based on these excerpts, a picture closer to reality comes into focus. Millions of New Yorkers left on the wrong side of the digital divide with inadequate choices of wired broadband service or no choice at all, and millions reliant on a copper network which Verizon is abandoning. The fact that no upstate city has a meaningful choice of wired broadband providers belies the notion, central to the staff's analysis, that, quote, "Vibrant competition, rather than cost of service regulation, will promote innovation and investment and constrain quality service of its regulated carriers," unquote. It is possible to study the report closely, read between the lines and discern that New York's telecommunications system faces very, very serious challenges, but nowhere does the staff report directly raise the question of whether these conditions reflect fundamental shortcomings of the policies it has adopted over the last 20 years. By failing to raise these questions, the report makes it that much more unlikely that new policy directions will be considered. Nor is there any other mention of other issues that have been raised by the Connect New York Coalition, such as the likelihood that Verizon New York is misallocating its costs within Verizon in order to demonstrate to the PSC that the company is losing money on its landline business, as Bruce talked about. The PSC has the authority to request financial documents to analyze whether this is true, but the PSC staff abrogated this responsibility entirely, not to mention the many problems that others have cited tonight, including that thoroughly documented by New York City Do-It about the problems with the build-out of FiOS in New York City. Given all these omissions and inadequacies, we strongly urge you tonight to initiate a formal proceeding on the petition filed with the PSC on July 1st, 2014 by Connect New York. New York consumers and workers need the commission to take a hard look at the policy failures of the last 20 years. We need the PSC to serve the public, not the corporations. And ensure that all New Yorkers are guaranteed the modern 21st century, high-quality services that they deserve. It's not good enough to get it right for some New Yorkers and to allow literally millions of others to be victimized by unregulated market forces. Every New Yorker must be protected. This report sadly does little to take us in the right direction.
Speaker following Mr. Goldman is going to be Joshua Munn, if I bet that correctly. Mr. Munn?
My name's Alex Goldman. I am an internet subscriber data nerd. In the year 2000, I joined a company that was called Internet.com to run a website called ISP Planet, covering competitive internet service providers. And we put out a quarterly report on broadband subscriber statistics using data come from public documents. I want to start with praise. I think that it is fantastic that the New York State Public Service Commission has adopted the FCC's redefinition of broadband to the sort, to defining it as the sort of speeds that people actually need today. I think that's really good. I wanted to warn you about the possible double counting of subscribers. It may, you may be aware of this problem internally, but it wasn't clear in the report. If a wealthy household has a wireline broadband line and then four family members have cellphones, that one household may count as five broadband data subscriptions. 10 years ago, the problem would have been less acute. We would have assumed that maybe one in 10 or one in five households had more than one broadband data subscription. But today, these wealthy households may be vastly double counted, which then means that the number of households that do not have broadband data subscriptions may be vastly underestimated. And that could have significant impact on the government's plan for rolling out broadband to needy areas. The size of the needy areas may be vastly underestimated. Secondly, I was a little worried that the data seemed to count Verizon in several different buckets, so that when Verizon is in fact competing against itself, it looks like the wireline business is losing money. So when we see a vast decline in access lines but a vast increase in cellular subscriptions, that's Verizon landline losing subscribers to Verizon wireless, but it isn't necessarily competition. I have two questions with regard to that. When a customer gets Verizon FiOS and they get a VoIP line, does that count as a loss of an access line and then a switch to some sort of over-the-top service? Is the VoIP service over FiOS counted as over-the-top or is it counted as still an access line? It's not clear to me and it's not something that you need to answer now, but I'd love to know the answer when you, when you go back to your data. Secondly, my friend Joe offers fixed wireless broadband. I never liked using wireless for cellular because it doesn't make clear that there are, there are other non-cellular wireless broadband options that do not have the sort of usage in data caps that cellular data does have. Finally, I'd like to reiterate Bruce's point about prices. I hope that you'll look beyond the promotional advertised prices and look at the prices that people actually pay with all the fees for the new... And then try to find out, this isn't easy, but I hope that you'll try to find out what prices people actually pay after the promotional period expires. I, again, I don't have suggestions on how to go without doing that. My final comment is about the massive bond issue, the record-breaking bond issue that Verizon made, issued 40... They issued $40-plus billion worth of bonds to buy out the rest of Verizon wireless from Vodafone, and I hope that that doesn't count as infrastructure investment.
Yes.
Okay, the speaker following Mr. Munn is William Colgrave. Is Colgrave, if you could move to the other microphone?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and thank you for correcting my name. It is Joshua Munn. I'm the volunteer and outreach manager for Common Cause New York. We will submit more extensive comments in writing, so I'll try to be very brief today. Common Cause is a national organization dedicated to helping citizens make our voices heard and achieving open, effective, and responsive government. Our organization has 32 state chapters, of which New York State chapter is one of our largest and most active. One of our core areas of concern is media and democracy. In the 21st century, communications are the lifeblood of our democracy. Unfortunately, years of bad, industry-friendly decisions by regulators have not provided Americans with the reliable and affordable high-speed internet and telephone services which they want, and need to function as full and effective members of today's society. Unfortunately, New York State is no exception to this distressing national pattern. And in my role as outreach manager, I've spoken to many Common Cause New York members about their experiences and expectations regarding phone and internet services which they receive. And our members understand that high-speed internet and telephone service are essential services in today's world, and they not only expect a high level of quality of services at reasonable prices, but also that their state government will be on their sides. I've heard over and over again that they feel that the service they receive is not the service they want, and they feel they are alone and unprotected in trying to hold the gigantic corporations to provide phone and internet to a reasonable standard. The members I have dealt with would laugh at the proposition that the telecom marketplace is functioning well to provide affordable and reliable world-class service in New York. While we at Common Cause New York believe it is essential that the PSC hold hearings on the state of telecom in New York State, my experience, just personally reaching out to our members, to inform them about the opportunity to testify hearings like this one tonight, has left me pretty convinced that the schedule for these hearings is ill-conceived and inadequate. The fact that the hearings are being held in the summer with relatively little notice has made it difficult, if not impossible, for many members who wish to testify in person to be heard. Our Common Cause New York staff members have reached out to other academics and experts on the issue, as we usually do, and the extensive tech community in New York, to encourage those with great technical expertise to testify. I wanted to learn that most are unavailable due to the shortness of notice and the fact that the hearings are held in the middle of summer again. The short length of time provided for public comments on the enormous topics, I know that you can do that online, but the short length of time provided for public comments on such an enormous topic of the state of telecommunications, and the fact that those topics are due once again in the middle of summer, is very troubling. Now, DPS staff, you guys took over a year to produce your assessments. Meanwhile, you expect the public and relevant non-industry stakeholders to provide meaningful and detailed comments of their own in 60 days during the months of July and August. And this is just not reasonable. And our experience in contacting consumers and experts regarding these hearings and the opportunity to comment has shown us this. We strongly believe that an evidentiary proceeding completely open and transparent is the most appropriate way for the commission to adequately examine the very broad and essential issues raised by the current state of telecommunications in New York State. That is why we are active members of the Connect New York Coalition and signatory to petition filed last July. In the fall, the PSC promised us a robust and transparent process of engagements with the Coalition and with others. And in April of 2015, PSC said that it would issue a roadmap for this study. Those promises, they were just not kept. Instead, on June 24, the same day as the announcements of Almey's big ugly end-of-session deal, the same exact day, the PSC announced that public statement hearings, and PSC staff issued an assessment of the industry, which effectively ignored the Connect New York petition. Public statement hearings are simply not adequate to delve into the extensive fact-finding, which should drive any meaningful examination of this issue, as they are great, but evidentiary hearings conducted under oath are essential for an accurate assessment of this topic, which is of paramount importance. Further, one more thing, further lumping all issues and all types of service offerings into the same short hearings and limited public comment period does not appear to be designed to elicit meaningful testimony, but we fear to give the public the sense that they are being heard, rather than to delve effectively into the realities of the marketplace experienced by New Yorkers. Each major service offering demands its own examination, and each of the questions that our Coalition has raised should be addressed separately and with adequate time for full evidentiary record. So with that said, we renew our request that an evidentiary adversary proceeding be opened, and in the meantime, we've worked very hard under the adverse conditions surrounding these hearings to help everyday New Yorkers, who are our members, be heard. And some of them are here tonight, and some of them will be able to inform you firsthand of their experiences. And other folks who aren't able to stick around until midnight, it looks like, to testify, we encourage you to go online, but also to tweet. Tweet, we've passed around a piece of information with some handles on there, and some hashtags. Use that, and text that number on there. I'm just gonna get a little plug.
Speaker following Mr. Colgrave will be Lorraine Borden? Lorraine? Lorraine, if you can come to the microphone in the center? Mr. Colgrave? Is Mr. Colgrave here? Okay, is Borden? Because Borden's not here. Okay, then we'll move on to Rondell Ross. Rondell Ross will be followed by Juanie Ful... Boy, this is a tough name. Juanie Fulgencio? Is it Juanie Fulgencio? No, okay. Rosalie Harman, or Harmon? Rosalie Harmon, that's my... Are you... Is this Rosalie coming down?
Yes.
Okay. You can back the microphone aside? I feel like Drew Carey at the moment. Okay, Mr. Ross, if you want to...
Yes, a lot has been spoken about the copper lines and deteriorating conditions that they're in. They represent more than just a dinosaur. They're an active lifeline for many people, particularly elderly people and people who are low-income. Also, as Verizon has used it, they're still a viable landfill for them to duck all of their expenses, so that they can make their books look better. But more than that, it's also a necessary redundancy, both for business and both for the consumer, because nobody should have all their eggs in one basket. It's a safety measure. If you have voice-over IP, or if you have internet resources, you also would want to have a redundancy in your business to have a copper line, which in case of disasters which have happened, like blackouts, you would have a viable resource that you can use, like a copper line, to communicate with your loved ones and your business partners around the world. So it needs to be invested in as an emergency response item, and not just as some kind of dinosaur that's no longer needed. It's actually needed more than ever. We've had Katrina's, we've had all kinds of disasters, and there have been long lines of people just waiting for phones, payphones, that were there, just to use so they can call their loved ones, because cellphones didn't work, and people need electricity to make their routers work, and there was no electricity. And so we need to really invest inside the infrastructure and not abandon it, like we have abandoned our bridges and stuff that are falling down now.
Following Ms. Harmon will be Craig Tuchek? Craig Tuchek? Okay, did he take the mic from his Tuchek?
My name is Rosalie Harmon, and I'm a consumer. I'm not familiar with this. I have, in my life, three main... I have Cablevision, I have FiOS, and I have AT&amp;T for my wireless. And I have found that with Verizon, in my home, we had two landlines, and after a while, the two landlines kept breaking down, so I had to keep calling. And repairmen would come, and he would go in the back. I had like this big pole, and I believe those must be the copper wires. And I also had internet service and TV from Cablevision. So what happened is that I was getting sick and tired of the phones going out of service. So it was recommended that I take FiOS, but in order that I get FiOS, you know, they recommended triple-play, but I didn't want to give up the Cablevision TV. So I tried to bargain with them, can I have the two landlines and the internet? And they said, no, they would not bargain with me. There was no bargaining. So I had two... I had one phone and the internet, but the price was higher, you know? And then, with Cablevision, I had had... Cablevision's another problem. Cablevision, I had two cable boxes, and one day, one of the cable boxes just wasn't working. So I called Cablevision, and Cablevision came and said, oh, you need a new box. You should have had a box a long time ago. So I said, well, what about my other cable box? Oh, no, we only give it to you if you need it. So then again, I took away one cable box later on down the line, and I found that for one cable box, I was paying a lot more money than I thought I should be paying. And then the third thing is, I'm talking about my iPhone now. Now, I have an iPhone 5, and it's AT&amp;T. And I discovered, and it may be my lack of technological finesse, I discovered that I have trouble with Wi-Fi. And when I... Like, for example, I was in an area that had time, water, and I couldn't use my Wi-Fi on my phone at all. And sometimes I'd get them on the bus, like in Brooklyn, they have Wi-Fi in the buses, and I find that I can't go onto the internet. The Wi-Fi pops up, and they say, sign on, and I try to sign on, and it doesn't work. And so I said, it's like all these Wi-Fi signals are getting confused, and instead of it being better, it's worse. So I'm saying, well, with all that I'm finding, or they're setting up Wi-Fi in the subway, and some subway stops have no Wi-Fi at all, and I'm surprised that they don't, and you can't... And then there's no service at all, and you lose your connection completely. So I'm saying, I don't feel like my life has been simplified by having all this technological stuff. It's actually complicated, my life, and has at times become a crisis if my internet goes down, or if I can't get... If I can't really properly use my cellphone. So... And I was listening to all the testimony, and I thought about the copper wire thing, because I was talking to some of the people in the audience, because I noticed all the red shirts. Yeah. So anyway, as a consumer, I will say that you can't bargain with anybody. That's one big problem. And that, being that I'm not a technological genius, I don't know how to deal with some of these problems that come up. Like, as I said, with the Wi-Fi, confusing me completely when I can't go from one place to another and use Wi-Fi. Just can't do it. So the only recommendation I have is that something be done to make it a little less chaotic.
I don't see him. Okay, I thought it is. Oh, you're Mr. Tuchek.
Sorry, I slipped around the backside.
Mr. Burns on the left side?
Thanks for hearing all of us testify this evening. Folks, I'm here tonight because of my dealings with my internet provider and their customer service, which has been filled with appalling amount of misleading and dishonest information. On January 13th this year, I attempted to sign up for Optimum internet service online. After entering the required information, the detailed charges included a $5 monthly modem rental fee, an installation fee of approximately $25. As I have my own modem and need a cable line installed, I wanted to avoid those costs. There seemed to be no way to refuse these services online, however, so I called the company to set up service that way. After talking to the representative and telling them the necessary information, he informed me that the charges would be approximately $45 a month, without going into any detail, that includes the regular monthly fee of $40 plus $5 modem rental fee. As I was aware of the modem rental fee, I asked if that was included in the cost, which it was, and I requested that the representative remove the service, since I didn't need it. After a few minutes of arguing about what kind of modem I have, he agreed to remove the fee. After that, he noted an installation fee of $25. I asked if that was required, as I already have a cable line, and can set up the modem as such myself. There are even instructions on how to do so on Optimum's website, and it was really easy. He seemed hesitant, but he finally removed that fee. At no point did he ask if I actually needed a modem or installation, nor did he note that these charges weren't necessary. He didn't ask if I needed these services, nor did he explain what the modem fee was, or tell me that I had the option to get my own modem. If I had known about the... Or if I had known about the issue from dealing with internet services in the past, and I would have had no idea about the charges if they weren't explained to me. His response when I asked about the necessity of these fees and related services was neither courteous nor honest until I pushed it. I received my first bill on January 26, which included the modem rental fee. I contacted the company, asking that the fee be removed, because I have my own modem, and it was told that, "I am showing you..." "I'm showing you are installed with internet service using a modem provided by Optimum." After stressing again that I was not, the fee was removed. At this time, I also contacted the New York City Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications with the same complaint, that the company should be clearly disclosing these fees and that these fees are not required. It seems that they contacted Optimum on my behalf, even though they don't have jurisdiction over these issues, apparently, which I learned later. And I got a call from their customer service representative, Donette, at their executive sales support customer relations department, to discuss my complaint. She informed me that the sales representative on January 13th had indeed informed me of these charges, the modem rental fee and installation fee. My complaint was specifically that he had mentioned nothing of the modem fee until after I pressed him, and was not first presented with the option to use my own modem instead. Additionally, as noted, the option was not available when I tried to sign up online. He also had not informed me that the installation service and fee was not necessary. I tried to get through to her that I'm complaining because the sales representative was not upfront about these charges, but she simply repeated that the representative had indeed informed me of them after I pushed on the course. She also detailed the prorated charges for the first partial month, which they didn't tell me about, but which I didn't have any problem with. So the DOITT representative I contacted earlier forwarded me the message from Optimum after I had this interaction with Donette, which said, "Mr. Tuchek was..." This is, you know, Optimum, their customer service, whatever, responding to my complaint. "Mr. Tuchek was contacted, and an apology was extended on behalf of Optimum because the sales representative did not advise him of the prorated charges to be applied to his first bill. Mr. Tuchek was advised that the sales representative told him of the $24.95 installation fee and $5 modem fee, and said neither charges would apply if his personal Airis modem was purchased from the Optimum website and is compatible with OLL. Mr. Tuchek was advised that the modem fee charged was removed and built back, blah, blah, blah. He was advised that the one-year fee, promotional $40 fee was in effect until next year. Mr. Tuchek was satisfied." Here, you see really no recognition of the reason I complained in the first place, no mention of perhaps an indication that they would consider the idea of honest business and disclosing fees upfront, plus the egregiously false claim that I was satisfied. Donette seemed to try to avoid directly responding to my actual complaint, and just continue to say that I was told of the charges without going into detail. Internet companies like Optimum should be made to clearly disclose modem fees and give customers the information necessary to make a decision to rent or buy a modem if desired by themselves. The company should also be clear about whether installation fees are necessary, and should note that self-installation is possible and actually really easy. Donette seemed to think that this was a very complex and impossible task, but all it takes is asking customers a simple and honest question. And just as an aside, I spent like 20 minutes on my phone trying to see if I have FiOS now available where I live in Bushwick. I couldn't find out, but I I couldn't find out, but I had like a thousand flashing screens saying, we have great deals for you. You should call us now. So thank you for your work and advocacy for us and for taking the time to listen to us tonight.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Okay. The following Mr. Burns will be Charles Bell. Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell here. Okay, can you come to the microphone over here?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
My name is Michael Burns, and I'm here as a citizen and a consumer of telecommunications services. And the reason I waited so long and approached this microphone with such passion is because I want the Public Service Commission to address on a state level and with a measure of compassion of the plight of many of our consumers of telecommunications in New York State. And that is the plethora, the locus feeding of these robo calls and telemarketing calls into our home. Now, the robo calls come in various iterations. I'll summarize them briefly. One is that Verizon, the interface between these savage telemarketers and the citizen, will not, will not insist that the ID facility be fully displayed for the consumer. So these telemarketers are able to put eight-digit numbers and all sorts of misleading data on the ID, which is unfair. It's unfair to the consumer. And remember, when a telemarketer calls your home through a robo call or a personal call, they are intruding into the sanctity of one's home. One of the few rights that we as American citizens have left to treasure and hold dear, may I suggest. The other technique is the, is the, I want to get the right word, is it's the call center dialings, where phone numbers are called on a wide scale. And when someone happens to pick up the phone inadvertently in most cases, there's a little bit of a time lag, and all of a sudden, a telecommunications person will get on and try and shill some issue or some subject, some product. And finally, after many months, I've concluded that Verizon must make a lot of money out of these things. And they won't get in the way and protect the consumer. So we're left to the Public Service Commission to help us out on this. The third, the third issue that I have in respect to this is the FTC had a robo call challenge recently. And the winner was a young man named Foss. And he came up with, Aaron Foss was the name. He came up with a system called No More Robo.com. And the reason I happened to stumble over this was through Consumer Reports, which had a little squib on it. And I ended up calling this, dialing into this robo.com, only to find out that Verizon doesn't support it. So, folks, what this issue is fundamentally is, we need some source cease and protection from the telemarketing industry, which has taken the new technology and with each iteration has become more savagely intrusive into our homes and into the sanctity of our lives. And it's just unfair, and it's wrong, and we need some help. So I beg, and beg is the right word, I beg you folks to get involved with this at every level you can to protect the New York State consumers from being assailed by this plague of locusts through telecommunications, robo calls, and other intrusions into the sanctity of their homes. Thank you very much.
Following Mr. Bell will be Lynn Corporal. Is that Lynn Corporal? Okay. You take the microphone over here on the side. Mr. Bell?
Hi, I'm Chuck Bell, and I happen to agree with everything the previous speaker said. We actually have, I work for Consumers Union, Policy and Advocacy Division of Consumer Reports. And actually, more than 330,000 consumers nationwide have signed our petition to ask for protection and relief from robo calls by asking the phone carriers to make free tools available to help consumers block those unwanted calls. So thank you for speaking out on that. So Consumers Union is a member of Connect New York Coalition. And I agree with what Bob Master and what Josh said about the need for a formal evidentiary proceeding. We feel that we are a primary stakeholder in this debate. It's one of the largest consumer organizations in New York State. We think there's a tremendous amount of work to be done in digging into the data and getting the facts and making telecommunications policy from an evidence-based framework. So we think that that is the policy that would best serve this process. And it's sort of a foundational step for creating affordable, accessible broadband for all. So we very much agree with the Coalition position and the position of all those 75 or 100 elected officials that have also signed on. I also want to recognize and acknowledge and thank the Public Service Commission for its efforts to review the Comcast-Tim Warner merger, which you wisely recognize could have very deleterious effects on competition and choice and availability of broadband in New York State. And even though we never got to a judgment or determination on that issue, I recognize the staff probably made a mighty effort on that effort by issue. But we learned about these hearings, and we put out a call to our members in New York State to give us some stories about telecommunications problems that they are experiencing. I have one story that I wanted to share from Jason in Brooklyn. He says, "We live on the second block of Midwood Street, up from Flatbush Avenue in the Prospect-Lefferts Garden neighborhood. We have ancient phone lines that run along the back fences of the houses on this block, which is all attached houses from one end to the other. No cable on our block, so everyone has satellite TV if they so choose, and possibly DSL internet connection are our only options. Every Verizon repair person who's come to our block knows very well the headaches that they'll have to deal with when they arrive. The relay blocks along the back fences for those old copper wires, every few houses, are often open to other elements, too. Verizon has talked about installing FiOS on our block for years and years, but can't figure out what method makes the most sense, let alone what homeowners will accept. Meanwhile, we have awful service, and everyone on the block just throws up their hands in frustration. As a consolation, it's someone amuses me to tell foreign friends just how bad our service is here in the middle of a big city that is supposedly in a technologically advanced country." So we received over 500 stories from our members just in the first week that we've been looking for them. And I've been going through them, and there's certain themes that jump out. There's a few success stories, you know, a few people found a VoIP provider that they like, or they have that broadband, they're very happy about it. But a common theme is, I'm a victim or a captive of a monopoly or duopoly provider. And they are engaging in essentially abusive marketplace practices that takes advantage of my ability not to switch to another provider. People are resentful for having sophisticated packages of channels that don't offer them much choice for a more affordable option. I have to pay for all those channels I don't want. We see alocarts mentioned in the staff assessment, but it's for consumers, it's very far away from being a reality. Many consumers complain that their bill creeps up with all kinds of unexpected charges, and it's essentially out of their financial control, particularly toward the end of a triple play deal. And they are resentful for that problem. They have many customer service problems where they've tried to interact with providers, and the providers unresponsive. And this is where we do not see a contradiction between innovation and consumer protection or, and we do not think that deregulation and competition solves all problems of consumer protection. So oftentimes, responsive referring a consumer problem back to the provider doesn't result in a solution. And so consumers often feel abandoned and disempowered and that there is no one to turn to. And in similar vein, there are often regulatory gaps where the commission doesn't have oversight authorities, or it's the FCC's job or someone else's job. From a consumer's perspective, it just seems that there's no watchdog on the beat, and we are being abandoned to solve our problems. So a theme in many of the stories is that consumers were angry and frustrated. So what we had hoped might come out of a formal proceeding would be answers to questions such as, how much do providers invest in the legacy fiber optic and wireless systems? What are the actual costs and revenues for each system? And what are the rates of return? What is the current level of service quality in all systems, and how is it being measured? Does effective competition exist? And recently, FCC had Tom Wheeler associate, does not exist for high-speed broadband and needs an affirmative remedy. What percentage of New Yorkers do not have telephone service? We saw many consumers who lost lifeline service in the many years of deregulation that we've had. Maybe it's ticking back upwards, but there's certainly a lot more that could be done. What is the definition of basic and essential services? And this is important for all of us as the economy shifts to more digital mode, where we're paying bills online, we're checking our electronic health records online, we're enrolling in New York State of Health online. But particularly important for low-income people who are trying to access social services and welfare services online and may not have an affordable choice for broadband. It's also not, their electric bill might not be affordable either. So healthcare, social services, and education. So do New Yorkers have a right to high-speed broadband? And that is something that could be addressed by that proceeding, and we would argue that they do. But we want to have, you know, substantive, detailed, constructive engagement where we're recognized as a formal partner to discuss those issues and rebut the material that would likely be submitted by telecommunications companies, lawyers who may have contrary arguments. So I will, I mean, we are planning to compile the telecom stories that we received, and we will submit them in some formal written comments for the record. I look forward to working with you going forward.
Lynn, is it Caprelli or Corporal?
Caprelli.
Caprelli. So the individual that raises his hand back there.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, that's okay. Following Lynn is going to be David. What is the tough one? Sedanov?
Solvenov.
Say that again.
Solvenov.
Solvenov. Okay, that's an L. Okay. Would you take the microphone over here, sir?
So as you know now, my name is Lynn Caprelli, and I am a consumer. And I've come here to ask you to assert your authority to stop Verizon from destroying our one secure emergency communication infrastructure. This is especially important here in New York City. Now, I want to tell you two incidents from my own family and some comments from my neighbors. I'm old enough to live through the 68 blackout, 65 blackout and subsequent blackouts. So with my mother on the eighth floor of an elevator building in Manhattan, Lower East Side, we paid the outrageous $80 a month fee to maintain her copper wire phone service. During Hurricane Sandy, she lost phone service, so we called Verizon to get repaired. And they said, oh, no, she's been switched to FiOS by her landlord. When they put in the, so we didn't know this, when they changed the intercom, Stoughton Town, Peter Cooper Village, they took everyone off copper wire phone service. So there she is in a blackout, on the eighth floor, no elevator, no electricity, no phone service. When FiOS, so that was, and Verizon people told us it would come back on when the power came back on. It did. Now, I'm on the 40th floor of a building in this neighborhood. So when Verizon wanted to bring FiOS into our building, I asked them whether there were any implications for our secure copper wire phone service. And they said, none, they're two separate systems. However, once they came into the building, they aggressively, of course, marketed to my neighbors the FiOS service. Some of my neighbors didn't understand, until I explained it to them later, that they were giving up emergency communications. I am on the 40th floor. If my power goes out, I have no elevator, no lights, no water. I want to have a telephone. One of my neighbors, an elderly widow on the 27th floor, when her voicemail went out, she was told that now that she was in a, quote, "FiOS neighborhood", because FiOS had come into the building, she had to switch over to FiOS that Verizon would not restore her phone service. And they have, every time they came to me to fix something, the, fortunately, I had a good relationship with the different people who came, the repair technicians. They told me their order was first of all to switch my phone to FiOS. And of course, I would correct it because I knew to ask. So again, this is Manhattan. These are high-rise buildings. This is our only emergency communications infrastructure. To get in touch with fire department, to get in touch with our families. These batteries don't work, as I saw from my mother's situation. You've got to protect our legacy copper wire infrastructure.
Following Mr. Solvenov will be Richard Leals.
Lewis.
Lewis. Okay. I think I'm batting about 200 right now. Do you think you have a microphone?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm David Solvenov. I'm the president of the New York chapter of the Internet Society. We are a chapter of the global Internet Society founded by Vincent, the father of the Internet dot com. And we work for the open development of new technologies, Internet freedom and access for all. This situation is very, very simple. It's overly complicated here, and I'll just illustrate the point with a very brief story of one of our members, Venny Markowski. Venny grew up in Bulgaria, a poor communist country. When the communist government fell and the internet became available, he worked there to form the Bulgarian Internet Society and started his own internet provider, his own ISP there to provide services to the new government there. Recently, he moved to New York City and got a good job working for ICANN, which handles the internet domain and IP addresses. So he got an apartment, no problem there. Housing is expensive in New York City, but he had a good job. Then he went and started looking around for internet service. And he said to me, why is it that internet service in New York City is 300 times more expensive than it is in Bulgaria, where I ran my own ISP? Maybe I should get into the internet business here. And I said, no, Venny, you can't do that because it's very hard to be an internet provider in New York City because Verizon has a sweetheart deal controlling the conduits under the city. And it's also very difficult to get building access if you're not Verizon or Tim Warner. So what is the problem here? In California, they have a water shortage. Do we have a fiber optic cable shortage in New York City? I don't think so. We're not rationing fiber optic cable. Is there a shortage of computer networking equipment? Are they rationing switches and routers because there aren't enough of them? No, they're very easy and very inexpensive. Is there a shortage of qualified people who know how to roll out that cable and connect those switches and routers and configure them? Well, there's no shortage of people who know how to do that, except Verizon has laid off about 3,000 of them in the past couple of years.
Yes.
Now, okay. And is there actually a shortage of internet access in New York City? No. If you go downtown, there are buildings there, carrier hotels that, you know, provide, where there are companies that provide wholesale internet access, and they have the hottest internet connections on the planet going into the internet backbone. So we've got internet here. We've got people who know how to connect it, everything. We've got all the equipment, and we've got all the fiber we could want, inexpensive. And somehow, we've got this problem here with bad telecommunications services. So there's got to be something else wrong here.
That's corruption.
There's got to be something else wrong. There's a missing piece here. And we have lots of Verizon workers here today. And so I know that they're honest people, they're really smart. They really want to build the best network in the world. But somehow, it's not happening. Or why is it not happening? There's, maybe I'm missing something here, but it seems to me there's only one missing piece. That one missing piece is the upper-level Verizon management, who's got to develop a new business model for Verizon. They think that they're making money for their stockholders, but it's not helping the workers, not helping citizens of New York. And that's got to change.
Following Mr. Lewis is going to be Selwyn Garraway. Selwyn, are you here, Selwyn? Okay. Take the center microphone, Lewis.
Yeah, I'm Richard Lewis, as you know, from Community Board 12 in northern Manhattan of New York. Most community, almost all community boards are on recess, some are recessed. And so we will submit a report to you before the 24th. we will submit our report to you before the 24th. In the meantime, I do have a few passing comments, which will be in the report. A few of them I mentioned to you earlier. And as you notice, most of the criticism today, tonight, is about Verizon. And somehow, I suspect that this is not the first time that Verizon has been criticized for the very same issues, yet they still persisted. So my question is, in terms of your audit and your assessment and the methodology that you've used in your report, that why has not some of this information been listed there as corrected or still pending? So are we reinventing the wheel again with another report that doesn't answer these questions? And so I raised that issue. In terms of quality of service, you were already been told that in Washington Heights, we have an equivalent MIBs of about five, which is equivalent to upstate New York. So we are far behind the digital divide. There've been a number of reports that have been brought to your attention, namely the control of New York in terms of digital access and digital libraries. That was done last year, and yet that's not reflected in your study itself. So if this is a pathway to telecommunications that you are presenting, we need to have full disclosure, full engagement, full audits of just what is going on, and this report doesn't show that. Some of the graphs are very nice, but I think that they don't reflect the true state of affairs. So we will submit our report to you, and hopefully you will listen to what everyone has said very eloquently tonight, and I think in great, great detail, so that perhaps the next phase that we see that you release will be a little bit better than what you've done so far. Thank you.
Following Mr. Garraway will be Jurtis Lynn Blanchard.
Jurtis.
Okay, take this microphone, please. Okay, Mr. Garraway, everybody?
Thank you for the opportunity to give a testimony, I guess. I am a resident of Lower Manhattan. I've been a resident for about 22 years, and most people consider that part of Lower Manhattan, the financial district, to be one of the wealthiest, one of the most sophisticated. Based on my personal experience, my opinion is that the Public Service Commission's deregulation, an inadequate oversight of the telecom industry in New York, has resulted in a diminished quality of customer service and repairs, severely limited my choice of cable providers to one, to only one, in my building in Lower Manhattan, and has made it impossible for prospective customers like me to avoid the overpriced, bundled plans that expire after only 12 months, after which you have to pay more to continue receiving service, whether that service is cable, telephone, or Internet. After Hurricane Sandy, Verizon claimed its physical infrastructure in Lower Manhattan was completely destroyed. I was left without incoming or outgoing telephone service to my 212 landline for nearly two years. During that period, Verizon continued to bill me monthly charges for non-existent phone service.
Oh, wow.
I protested in writing repeatedly and demanded repair to no avail. After sending three inspectors, Verizon never repaired my landline. Instead, Verizon closed my account and sent the account to collections, which has harmed my credit rating. This was my treatment after being a loyal Verizon customer for over 20 years. I've since had to hire an attorney to bring resolution to this matter. As far as cable service is concerned, where is the freedom of choice in the marketplace? There is none, as far as I could see. I ceased using Time Warner Cable many years ago because I could not afford its increasingly prohibitive pricing. But I could not obtain service through an alternate provider like RCN, for example, because Time Warner Cable has monopolized the marketplace in Manhattan, made it impossible for me to switch to a provider with better plans and pricing. My neighbors also tell me, the ones who still use Time Warner Cable, that they are frustrated, and they tell me of when their cable reception fails, it can stay that way for days without explanation before service is restored, often without a discount being offered. So where does a customer turn to obtain remedy when telecom providers like Time Warner Cable and Verizon are not being held accountable sufficiently for poor service and other abuses? I learned of this, the ability to file these complaints tonight through common cause, thankfully, and I will, have not had a chance to read the study yet, but I will do so and also add commentary online to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Selwyn Garraway.
So, Mr. Garraway, I also wish you, please, before you leave, get the, some information so you can actually submit your complaint to our Consumer Agency.
Yeah, I have your sheet with the information on the website.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Lynn Blanchard, Grace Wayne. Grace Wayne?
I'm over here. I'm over here.
Grace is there.
Yes, I'm over here.
Grace is there. Okay, you're going to be following right here.
All right.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Jurtis Lynn Blanchard, and I'm here as a consumer to represent myself and my family, who is extremely lucky to have recently built upstate New York, where we had camped for many years. And so I'm here to represent downtown Manhattan, NoHo, as well as Ulster County. I really hope that there might be some hearings in upstate New York, in places as depressed as Ulster County. So this lifelong dream to build a home and an art studio in a sustainable manner, using geothermal and solar power to minimize the amount of propane use. And what is required with these types of systems, which are forward-thinking, sustainable systems, that I do believe we all want to see more of in our state and in our whole country, requires a very reliable Internet connection to have the communications between how much energy we are producing in solar and to understand whether our geothermal well is working. This also is actually a health and safety issue with my father in current failing health and in hospice, home hospice. We absolutely need to have direct Internet connection to his doctors and caregivers. I'm sure that I am just a small example of many other people who have safety issues with Internet connectivity. Upstate currently, we have HughesNet, which is a satellite provider, and if their highest data plan, speaking of data caps this evening, is $120 a month for 20 gigabytes, which, you know, you definitely go through more than 20 gigabytes in a month, especially if you're paraplegic and your one way of being in the world is through Internet, like my father. So, you know, I don't actually think that that is a reasonable price, and then if you need more gigabytes, you buy them with tokens for two gigabytes each at $16. Seems really kind of, you know, an inefficient way of getting more gigabytes. So we called Time Warner Cable, who from the city, when my brother-in-law called from New York City, they were like, oh, yeah, no problem, we can get you, we can get you connected upstate much better than what you're getting right now. When they actually showed up in Ulster County on Steam Hollow Road, they, the discussion actually was quoted, my mother was quoted $30,000 to bring in Time Warner Cable because they own the land. Now, I can attest to you that no one in the vicinity around Ellenville is going to be spending $30,000 to bring in Time Warner Cable. So there is, this is anecdotal, but it's evidence that the market is not competitive and it is not affordable, and I think that we really, the citizens deserve better service than that, and I really hope that you give some voice to upstate. And the other part of it, downtown NoHo, very spotty, erratic Time Warner Cable service, well beyond you just need to restart your modem and reset your router. Thank you.
Following Ms. Wayne will be Catherine Barnes. Okay, Barnes, did you take the microphone? Go ahead, Ms. Mike.
All right. Hi, my name is Grace Wong. I'm originally from China, but I live in New York now in East Elmhurst. I work for New York Technology Council. I'm also going to be running for elections at Internet Society. And basically, the situation that I've had with my home Internet service provider is there's been construction on our street recently, and they had to take out the pipe of the gas line, and then the Internet was disrupted. And one of my coworkers told me that we could get credit back for our plan, I think it's Time Warner Cable, during the time that our service was interrupted, and other people on our street who were using satellite Internet, they were able to continue working, and I was actually, it was a really big hindrance to everyone in my household. And so, you know, we've been trying to change our service provider to no avail, and because they won't give us the credit back for that time that we were disrupted. And so that's basically been, I think, my primary sort of memorable experience with using, with Internet in New York since I've moved here. All right, well, thank you for your time. Hi, my name is Catherine Barnes.
Ms. Barnes, hold the phone a moment, if you would. If you'd just hold on one second.
Sure.
I'd like to get the next speaker waiting in the line here, Rex Cusry, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Take the center microphone. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll be short. I'd like to remind everybody that we, as citizens, own the airwaves. There are commons. These companies do not pay us rent to use our commons. We are charged exorbitant fees. I would say it's predatory because we're given a low amount, and mine has almost tripled. And I only have Internet. I don't have TV anymore. I have a landline, and my building, which is considered a very good building actually, is supposed to be getting FiOS probably in a year or so. And I heard that I would have to lose my landline. I was in an area that lost electricity, water, whatever else. I was very happy to have gas to cook with and a landline that worked. I had one of the three landlines on my floor. And actually, I didn't know until Thursday that Uptown had power, because it's that isolating when you don't have it. Anyway, my complaint primarily is that my service is really bad. In fact, last week, I was getting broken-up pixels. Would you expect that? Not just slow service, but broken-up pixels. I only have Internet. I am very dependent on it with keeping in touch with my family, who are all out West. And the only reason these companies can do it is because you let them do it.
Yes.
You let them do it. You are supposed to work for us. You're the Public Service Commission. You are the Public Service Commission. Now, you all look bored as, you look bored. You look thoroughly bored. You look like, okay, we'll listen to you, but we're not going to do anything. Please do something. Not for them, for us. Because you know what? Our country, it really did turn. I am so depressed about how our country is going down the drain, corporation by corporation. And when TPP and all those other trade things get passed, whatever you do will be moot because you've got a triumvirate that will decide that companies can make money by suing us rather than providing services or jobs or anything else. Wake up! Our country is not the way it was when I was a kid, not at all. It is going so slowly, and I'm glad, I'm 75, and I expect not to be around when it's really, really bad. But it's going down the drain, and it's all the tiny little pieces. You're part of a puzzle.
Oh, yes.
Look at the whole big picture, because what you do and what all that our government is doing bit by bit, everybody's taking a little piece and taking it away. And we're giving our, we're losing our freedom, we're losing our communications.
Yes.
It's very important. You may not think so, but it really is. And you don't look like you're going to last as long as I will either.
How is it?
Your grandchildren will want freedom.
Will want it, yes. Yay! Following Mr. Christopher Actorial? Is it Actorial? Is anyone here by Actorial? How about Walter Mosley? Okay, he'll be over here at this microphone. Is it okay if I do that one? Well, if you have.
Can I give you, I sent this to the secretary, but you should see the picture on the second page. The, my name's Rex Curry, and I'm from a neighborhood association in Brooklyn, called the Alamo Kenmore Neighborhood Association. And I waited this long because I've just recently got involved in trying to bring modern communications to my block, to old building, and we've been trying to do it. So we've got a variety of things going, but there was one lesson that I wanted you to remember. But first, I thought for the commission side, get Susan Crawford's book, Captive Audience. You guys are the big-picture people, so you really have got to read it. And on the staff side, you've already had your lunch handed to you, and I read the report, and I agree with the criticisms of the watchdogs. I think you really do have to start over, and you really should break it down into parts, small, workable parts. New York State is huge. It would take you a year just to understand Brooklyn in a really true and honest way. So there was a lesson that we learned a long time ago, I can't remember the year, but there was a truck driver driving down the West Side Highway, and he drove to his death as a piece of it collapsed right before his eyes. And the lesson that New York City learned at that time was that preventative maintenance has no constituency. There was no stockholder, there was no lobbyist screaming, "Paint the elevated highway steel." So that is the one point that I want to just keep in your heart. That's not happening now. There is not that advocacy for painting steel. In this case, there's a very short list of what the infrastructure requirements of New York City are, and it doesn't include our public structures, it doesn't include our ability to move around. It's a very, very short list of infrastructure requirements, and they are gas, electricity, water, sewer, and the new one on the block, and you know what it is, broadband infrastructure. And we don't have a paint-the-still attitude towards that last one. It's so new, even the first few paragraphs of your report saying, "The world has exploded right before our eyes. We are looking at this amazing new thing." And yet, the entire session here has been about you not having the backup. You don't have backup. And the first rule of anything in IT is have a backup. Have backup to your data, have backup to yourself. And so I believe that your constant work and your core principles are for us as consumers. I really, really believe it. But you really, really need to bone up on your, getting your corporate leaders, the people who own the big corporations and are honestly trying to make some money here, a little bit more on the ball than they have been. They really, really, really are pulling some wool over our eyes. And I know this from my personal experience. So we're like, my neighborhood is like... So we're like, my neighborhood is like a rock going up a hill. But we have had to discard that rock. And we've opened up a thing called communitydesign.net/AKNA and are doing organizing in a way that we believe is really, really important now. Because the voice needs to be broader and the watchdogs need to gather their steel and their thoughts. So I am suggesting here that you listen to little websites like that, blogs. Have your technology officers, if you have them, just register and give us an email address and you will begin to hear from us and organizations like Pulp about the day-to-day experience of working with some marvelous people who come to repair that mess you see in that picture. That's what we're dealing with. It is not pretty. We call it the rat's nest. So I thank you. I know these are hard to do, but I think if you move to an evidentiary approach, which is strongly recommended by the people who really know what's going on, you're going to get some truth instead of just complaint. So I thank you.
Following Mr. Mosley will be Ben Kalos. One on the same. One on the same, you're two people.
Yes.
Okay. So that's speeding things up, I appreciate that.
Not so much. So I'm, good evening Judge Van Ork, Chair Silverman, Commissioner Sayer, and the members of the Public Service Commission. Thank you for hearing so much of the testimony today. I was not able to go to, I think, six or seven meetings in my community in order to be here tonight, but I decided I needed to stay. My colleague Walter Mosley and Assembly Member needed to get back to his district after waiting an hour and a half. And that is our job. Our job is, much like yours, we spend our evenings and our days in hearings, listening to our community and working with them. The big thing I want to say thank you to is thank you for selecting a location with air conditioning this year. To, I'll read my testimony, sorry, I will submit my testimony electronically. I have a summary of the testimony that is about one-tenth the length of what will be submitted. And then I'll read Assembly Member Mosley's, I'm Councilmember Ben Kalos. You can connect with me regarding this testimony on social media via Ben Kalos. I'm an attorney, I'm a software developer who got elected in the New York City Council representing the Upper East Side, East Midtown, Roosevelt Island, and Alvario. I worked my way through college at SUNY Albany laying Cat 5 cable, like many of my brothers and sisters, at CWA 1101. But I must thank for being here tonight. We have a rare and overdue opportunity to conduct a comprehensive and thorough analysis of telecommunications industry in the state of New York. And we must do whatever it takes to achieve universal broadband to bridge the digital divide, whether through regulation of providers of mobile phone, fiber, or cable. Each communications medium is increasingly being used as a method to deliver internet access. As we move forward, the PSC must ensure that phone service providers do not abandon our most robust copper-wire infrastructure that is singularly capable of providing communications during emergencies and through weeks-long blackouts such as those caused by Superstorm Sandy. The PSC must use this opportunity to maintain or improve upon existing telecommunications infrastructure while making universal broadband a reality through universal mobile broadband, universal fiber, and through cable service providers expanding free and affordable broadband. Connectivity has become so essential to the functioning of the 21st century economy that mobile phone adoption has become nearly universal, according to your report, often in the form of the smartphone with internet in our pockets. Who could have thought of that in 2005 or 2006, the last time we did this? Meanwhile, Google and other developers have already moved towards a mobile-first approach of the internet. And the concern here is that unlimited data plans are becoming a thing of the past. And rather than focusing exclusively on terrestrial-based broadband provided through cable, fiber, or wired phones, the PSC has an opportunity to leverage its regulation of wireless providers to bridge the digital divide through universal mobile broadband to ensure that wireless companies extend Lifeline to ensure that low-income smartphone users can afford unlimited access to the internet. It's of note that Verizon offers Lifeline, but only in eight counties versus all of the counties of the state. And they should be. We can expand the library hotspot system that we have in New York without internet so that people can borrow it for months at a time, and this is something that should be replicated outside of New York City. Expand low-cost unlimited data plans for all wireless customers and protect customers from bill shock resulting from phantom data charges. Your apps download things, you pay the bill, even though you may not have known about it. With regard to universal fiber, on June 18th, 2015, the New York City Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications concluded an audit of Verizon's implementation of BIOS, the company's state-of-the-art fiber optic network. The audit found that even after seven years, Verizon's fundamentally failed to honor a condition in the franchise agreement to extend BIOS by June of 2014 to any household in any of the fiberers which requested it. Instead, universal coverage is promised. We have anywhere from 45% to 60% coverage, but many residents, including me, are told that BIOS is simply unavailable to them. If Verizon had honored its commitment to New York City, we would have already achieved universal broadband instead of 22% of families and 30% of those below the poverty line. Do not have broadband in their home. This broken promise is unacceptable. It is imperative that PSC assist in the enforcement of the franchise agreement and hold Verizon accountable.
Yes, please.
Following our comments from the then-proposed Comcast-Time Warner cable merger and the threat that New Yorkers would not have a second bite at universal broadband for the Big Apple, the FCC adopted net neutrality guidelines and Chairman Wheeler has called for Lifeline eligibility for broadband. Now with the charter Time Warner Cable merger before your body, we request that you, the proposed merger serve the public interest by providing free and affordable universal broadband by rolling out Connect to Compete program in New York and expanding the program from free and reduced school lunch recipients to those who receive any federal, state, or city benefit, forcing the companies to commit to becoming the eligible telecommunications carrier, an ETC, in order to provide Lifeline for phone and eventually broadband services, and eliminating connection fees in urban areas that do not already have connections, such as, one person said tonight citing $30,000 to get an internet connection. Additionally, serving our legacy copper networks, the legacy copper networks that New Yorkers rely on for voice and data services are in poor conditions in marinae areas of New York City, citing high maintenance costs Verizon has pushed to retire these networks, limiting consumer choice. Alarmingly, the massive power outages caused by Superstorm Sandy showed that voice-over-IP, mobile, and fiber systems are not resilient as copper during outages. Making matters worse, soon after the storm, Verizon replaced copper cables with fiber instead of repairing them. Verizon must maintain and repair copper networks to ensure New Yorkers have access to reliable phone systems during emergencies. Otherwise, it leaves New Yorkers like myself and so many others to go door-to-door throughout buildings to make sure that the homebound aren't trapped in their homes without a way to call for help. And I just want to thank you for all that you do. I, as an elected official in government, get to see a little bit from the inside how hard it can be to deal with forcing some of these companies to do things that they never want to do. And I just want to appreciate that you may have gotten a lot of criticism tonight, but hopefully you're able to channel that towards the industry and remind them of what they put you through every time you have to do the public hearings.
Yes.
And just thank you for your service and hopefully you can be a strong advocate for us. And if I may, I'd like to just read Walter Mosley's statement. Assembly Member Walter Mosley, I would like to thank the Public Service Commission for allowing me the opportunity to testify today regarding Verizon telecommunications, the late process and build-out of its high-speed internet service to millions of New Yorkers, not only in upstate regions, but also in the New York City's outer boroughs. My name is Walter Mosley, New York State Assemblyman from the 57th Assembly District. I represent the neighborhoods of Fork Green, Clinton Hill, Prospect Heights, and parts of Bedford, Thylacine, and Crown Heights. I'm here today because the high-speed internet and telephone services are vitally utility services for all New Yorkers, and there has been a substantial interest and subsequent investment by state government in the sum of $500 million to expand access to the digital service. Downloading a high-definition movie takes about seven seconds to see Hong Kong, Tokyo, Zurich, Bucharest, and Paris, and people pay as little as $30 a month for that connection. In Los Angeles, New York, and Washington, downloading the same movie takes 1.4 minutes for people with the fastest internet available, and they pay $300 a month for the privilege, according to a report published by New York America, New America Foundation's Open Technology Institute. The reason the United States lags behind many countries in both speed and affordability, according to the report, has nothing to do with technology. Instead, it is the economic policy problem, the lack of competition in the broadband industry. Three-quarters of American homes have no competitive choice for the essential infrastructure for the 21st century economics and democracy. This puts our country at a competitive, comparative economic disadvantage when it comes to information technology accessibility. Internet speed is not a luxury. To the contrary, it is a vital aspect of our economy, and to ignore it would be tantamount to ignoring our roads and bridges which help transport our goods and services across America. Sadly, we do ignore our crumbling infrastructure, but forgive my editorial comment. More competition, better technologies, increased quality of service on wireline networks help to drive down prices. This is Economics 101. The failure of Verizon's telecommunication's ability to meet its requirement by expanding access to its BIOS internet service is a hindrance not only to service, but an impact in economic growth for upstate communities as well as outer boroughs of New York City. When companies look for environments to set up their businesses, an increasing important aspect of that search is access to fast, reliable internet access. Increasing access to internet is increasing access to online commerce, the ability for hospitals to access and transfer vital medical records, the ability for working families to attend online classes at night and thus achieve college graduate-level educations and be economically competitive. Going forward, it is the duty of the Public Service Commission and more over government to make sure our state can maintain the economically competitive markets in this 21st century. I hope the findings of public hearings help to move forward to that goal. I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity to testify. Thank you again for staying here so late tonight.
Mr. Kalos, it's nice to meet you in person. And please tell Assemblyman Mosley they would appreciate him being here and sorry that we were delayed and he had to leave.
Okay, the next speaker is Patricia Wood. Patricia here? Following Patricia will be Lawrence, is it Bevy?
I'm losing my, I'm losing my audience.
Hold on a second, is it Laverne? Laverne. Is it Bevy? Barry, okay. Have a seat right up here, please. Go ahead, Ms. Wayne.
So thank you for this opportunity. I will make this brief because of the time. I wanted to make you aware of an emerging health issue and an international science-based initiative to support the protection of pregnant women from exposure to wireless radiation or radio frequency radiation, from cell phones, routers, cell towers, utility smart meters, as well as other wireless devices. The initiative is called the Baby Safe Project. This Baby Safe Project comes from the research primarily of Hugh Taylor, Dr. Hugh Taylor, who's the head of reproductive sciences and OB-GYN at Yale Medical School. It is also supported very strongly by the School of Public Health at UC Berkeley and Dr. Deborah Lee Davis from Environmental Health Trust, a former member of the president's panel, cancer. The, to date, there are over 150 medical doctors and researchers from around the world who have signed on to the joint statement on pregnancy and wireless radiation, which reads very briefly, "We join together as physicians, scientists, and educators to express our concern about the risks that wireless radiation poses to pregnancy and to urge pregnant women to limit their exposures. We recognize that the exquisitely delicate systems that direct the development of human life are vulnerable to environmental insults and that even minute exposures during critical windows of development may have serious and lifelong consequences. We know that the scientific process demands a thorough and exhaustive examination of the possible impact of wireless radiation on health. However, we believe substantial evidence of risk, rather than absolute proof of harm, must be the trigger for action to protect public health. We call on the research community to conduct more studies to identify the mechanisms by which a fetus could be affected by wireless radiation exposures. We call on our elected leaders to support such research and to advance policies and regulations that limit exposures for pregnant women. We call on industry to implement and explore technologies and designs that will reduce radiation exposures until such research is carried out. And finally, we affirm our role as health and science professionals to inform the public about the potential dangers associated with early life exposures to wireless radiation and invite all professionals engaged in obstetric, pediatric, and environmental health advocacy to join us in our quest to ensure the safety and health of future generations." I must tell you that a Chinese manufacturer of routers has recently produced a particular model that has actually a pregnancy setting on it, which reduces the amount of radiation coming out of that router by about 70%. I want to give you a list quickly of government agencies, professional societies, and public health organizations around the world that are calling for further research on wireless radiation. And they include the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the American Academy of Environmental Medicine, the National Cancer Institute, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Cancer Society, the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is IARC, it's the cancer research arm of the World Health Organization, the International Commission for Electromagnetic Safety, and the European Parliament and European Environment Agency. Also, I just wanted to mention that around 200 scientists just in May sent an international appeal to the Secretary General of the United Nations, calling for the protection from non-ionizing electromagnetic field exposures. Once again, we are seeing technology that is getting out way ahead of the science. And then you have all these researchers, you know, working in their laboratories at very significant research facilities and universities and hospitals that are finding that there are non-thermal biological effects from exposure to wireless radiation. The accommodations need to be made in homes and workplaces and other public places for pregnant women and for those growing number of people who suffer from EHS, which is electromagnetic hypersensitivity. I'm actually here today, I came out from Long Island, because there are people living here in the city who could not attend tonight's hearing because they are suffering from EHS and they were not able to come into a building that has a wireless router in it. Many of them actually made phone calls to see whether or not that router could have been disabled for tonight's hearing. And so finally, this growing population will require landlines and Ethernet access to the internet as they present no health risks whatsoever. Thank you.
Following Ms. Barry will be Ellen Fininger. Ellen? Was Ellen here? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Wayne.
My name is Laverne Barry, and I run a very small business. And by small, I mean myself and one employee. We depend on being able to communicate through the telephone and the internet email service to get our work done. To be able to do my work in a consistent basis, I have to employ three separate redundant systems. And so I'm here today just to say that because there's nominal competition, that doesn't mean that there is actual competition. I have a Verizon business line, I have Verizon Wireless, and I have Time Warner. And I use all three because many times, at least one of them is not working. To be ready for this hearing tonight, and I just heard about it this week, I called my Verizon service to ask them how many times I had put in a repair ticket in the last two years. I had 35 tickets since February of 2014. Including one in the last week because the area that I was in had a downing of voicemail services. I work in a area of Brooklyn where there is no BIOS available, and routinely I will go to other business owners or shop owners who cannot use their credit card services because they can't get access to the line and who are having other kinds of business issues because of the telecommunications services. My Time Warner, which is supposed to be the backup for my Verizon, I've also had a lot of repaired tickets put in. And for a while, when the, when the people would come out to of repair tickets put in, and for a while, when the people would come out to do the repair, they would say, "Oh yeah, you're on that block. All of the hookups are covered over with plastic bags." So my main point here is that there seems to be a lack of commitment to keeping the infrastructure robust. I can even understand if all services may not be available at a time as things rolled out, although when asked, like many other people said, "When file service is going to be available?", we've just been told it's not available. But if something else is not available, then what is available has to work. Thank you.
Okay, following Ms. Wanniger will be Doug Wood.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I will confine my remarks to smart meters, which are a form of wireless communication, which are of significant concern. Wireless smart meters produce radio frequency radiation in approximate same range as a typical cell tower. A smart meter can cause much higher radio frequency exposures than cell towers commonly do. Smart meters involve whole-body exposures to microwaves, increasing overexposure to many sensitive organs. They produce potent and short-pulsed radio frequency microwaves associated with biological effects, and emit millisecond-long radio frequency bursts on an average of 9,600 times a day and potentially up to 190,000 transmissions daily, exceeding stated safety signal. People in proximity to a smart meter are at risk of significantly greater cumulative radio frequency microwave exposures, especially when living near multiple meters mounted together, pole-mounted routers, or utility collector meters to relay radio frequency signals from anywhere from 500 to 5,000 homes. Physicians around the world are treating patients who report adverse and debilitating health impacts following installation of smart meters, which amid these EMF frequencies and radio frequency radiation. Peer-reviewed scientific literature demonstrates a link between these exposures and neurologic cardiac and pulmonary disease, as well as reproductive disorders, immune dysfunction, cancer, and other health problems. More than 1,000 studies conducted on low-intensity, high-frequency, non-ionizing radiation of the last 50 years demonstrate that some do not involve thermal or heat effects at all. This type of radiation sends radio frequency radiation to living tissue that stimulate biochemical changes which produce symptoms and may lead to diseases such as cancer. A significant case series submitted by Dr. Federica Lemec, regarding smart meters in particular, clearly demonstrates adverse health effects in the human population from smart meter exposures. With no government oversight, smart meters were approved but never tested in real-world applications, where these new electronic radio frequency microwave devices are connected to and interact with an endless array of electrical systems, electronic and wireless equipment, building materials and biological systems, and wide range of possible conditions of each of these systems. The mass deployment of smart meters could expose significant populations to alarming risks without their knowledge or consent. I also want to just touch on two other points in this regard, and that is that smart meters also pose a serious fire hazard in communities. Globally and nationally, there have been numerous reports of fires and explosions from smart meters, and recent examples just within the last few months include Stockton and Capitola, California. In Stockton, several thousand smart meters exploded in that community when an electrical surge occurred, when a truck, utility truck, as it turns out, knocked over a utility pole and caused this surge. Some recommendations that I hope you will consider strongly is a full investigation of smart meters and their health impacts. It's absolutely imperative. Also, to allow people who wish to maintain their analog meters to do so, and they should not be penalized, they should not be fined, they should not be charged extra charges for doing so, and that the analog meters should not be destroyed. The quantities of analog meters that have been removed, that they can be used as a supply for those people who either wish to keep their analog meters or who already may have a smart meter and wish to get their analog meter back. Also, recommend a moratorium on smart meters until the investigation of health impacts of smart meters is completed and all impacts are fully addressed and mitigated. And finally, a real serious concern is that currently, people who are trying to avoid smart meter installations, either they are aware of the issues or have some concerns about them, or they themselves have medical issues, they may have medical devices which can be impacted by those radio frequency radiation signals, are in situations where they're being threatened and intimidated by utility companies, being told that their electrical service will be cut, their water service will be turned off if they don't accept the installation of a smart meter. I'd like to know from you what someone can do about that, because these are things that are happening currently and have been happening, and people are at a loss, exercising every possible avenue to avoid cutoff of power, and calling their local representatives. In fact, my understanding is there have been calls to the Public Service Commission without a response. So if you could respond to that question here this evening, what someone would do in that event?
Ms. Wanniger, just maybe I should point out now that the purpose of this hearing was to be discussing things such as the broadband, and I was kind of hoping that broadband and other types of telecommunications services, and you didn't seem to draw a link. You were simply discussing the radio frequencies emitted from the units themselves. Are you trying to draw some link to the other units, or are you simply suggesting that this is a cumulative effect?
Well, this is a form of telecommunication, because these are systems that are deployed and being considered, and it is a form of utility companies now using these kinds of technologies for the purpose of collecting data about services.
So you're saying it's something more than simply the meter itself?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, but does anyone have an answer to the question that I posed?
If somebody has a concern, they can contact our Consumer Services, and I'm not aware of any situation at any time where our Consumer Services have not responded to a request for assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood, you're next, and I believe he is followed by Thomas. Is it Darkin? Is Thomas here still? Okay, Mr. Wood, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Maybe I'm the last person, you can all go home after this. I'm Doug Wood, I'm the Associate Director of Grassroots Environmental Education with a nonprofit, science-based, environmental health organization. I'm also the co-creator of the Baby Safe Project, which is on the web at babiesafeproject.org. I noticed in the pamphlet that was, or the materials handed out tonight, that the PSC has among its other charges a responsibility to see that the public is, quote, "sufficiently protected." I was curious, you know, to think about what that actually meant, and from my perspective, I wanted to offer these things to you. As you heard from my longtime friend Patty, over the past few decades, there have been a number of peer-reviewed scientific studies showing biological effects of wireless radiation at levels far below what the FCC considers safe. Speaking of the FCC, their testing is done on a 220-pound man, as you know, and all devices are tested at a distance of 20 centimeters away from the body. For anybody that has a smartphone, if you take it out, if you look at Settings, and you go to General, and you go to About, and you go to Legal, and you go to RF Exposure, you'll see that it says right on your smartphone, "Do not", it says, "Carry this device at least 10 centimeters away from the body." How many people even know how far 10 centimeters are? Not too many. The reason that that warning is there is because the insurance companies aren't insuring the cellphone carriers for any sort of personal liability that comes from our exposure, because they know the science. So against this backdrop, there's this rush to install wireless networks and, you know, wireless hotspots around the city. I have to agree with so many of the people who spoke here tonight about the importance of copper wire, and before we all jump into a wireless world and then find out we've made a big mistake, I would urge you to think about that. You know, science can be frustrating, especially independent science moves slowly, it doesn't move at the pace of commerce, and how many times do we have to have a situation where commerce gets out ahead, and then we find out that what we thought was so great wasn't so great, whether it was BIOX or HRT or any number of things that I could name and we all know about. You know, John Adams said, "Facts are inconvenient things." I'm giving you some inconvenient things to think about, and I hope you'll think about them. If your mandate really is to sufficiently protect the public, this is a right-to-know issue. I urge you to look into it. Don't pretend that it's not there. Keep this in mind as you go through your deliberations, and thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone who has filled out a card that hasn't spoken as yet? Your name, sir?
Flax, number 36.
Okay, I'm missing, the card must still be out front. Could you come up to the microphone, please, just if you can spell your name for us, and I'll get it down for you?
Strange that it's gone. I have a bad voice. My name is Alan Flax, A-L-A-N, Flax is spelled F as Frank, L-A-C-K-S as Sam. I reside at 313 West 100th Street, Manhattan, New York City, Your Honor. Listening to many of these speakers, I think I would love to comment on some of the things they said, but there's so much to say, maybe saying nothing is best of all. Actually, the assessment report, there was none here, oh, said the person who lost my card, it's online. Well, not in this state. Three February's ago, Mario Feis signed into law the bill requiring, it was very simple, "We encourage the use of the electronic spectrum, but all state and municipal agencies must supply hard copies if requested," and the third part had to do with facsimile, transmission of signatures. I might say that I'm shocked, really shocked, to find that we have two commissioners here, and that the chairwoman actually came down to New York. I have been away from this field for a number of years because of professional obligations and personal obligations, my professional responsibilities is, but in the last century, commissioners never came to New York City except for a December session, so they could then go shopping in our department stores, and that was so. I'm very happy to see that there's Audrey Zivelman, who looks much better in person than her black-and-white, two-dimensional glossy, and I'm so glad that you are here and listening and saying, unlike the MTA Board, where there would be a full audience and no commissioners at their hearings in Manhattan. And Greg Sayer, I'm happy that you're here, though you too, as the chair, come from industry. I've known you to be extremely knowledgeable and fair, and you are one of the most courteous litigators I've come across in life. I want to say, though, that the comments of the people here, I was very impressed with, whether as an ordinary telephone user, subscriber, or one of the texts from the union and representatives from other organizations, everything they said was quite interesting, excellent, and offered some good ideas, much better than listening to the commission's session, where your staff could put people to sleep, and I think you had the people here testifying to some really brilliant points that put your own staff to shame. I wanted to just also remind the vast audience here that last century, the Public Service Commission, going back, I guess, to Roosevelt's day when he was governor, and had the chair mauled me, who looked out for the people, the Public Service Commission was called a wholly owned subsidiary of the utilities it's supposed to regulate. And I'm afraid under Andrew Feis, it may be moving in that direction, because those who are appointed, maybe now Mr. Sayer, Councilor Sayer, that, and people are appointed to anything by Cuomo, they are to seek to supporting him for President of the United States, which is becoming less likely, and that's the main job that you see your agency, serve the public so the public will vote for him. And that is true. As the press has pointed out, he only appoints people to commissions, authorities, boards, and so forth, if they support his candidacy or gave big bucks to his campaigns. On three points I'd like to mention, everything is all related, deals with communications service. I did not research this, but someone told me that in North Carolina, there's a law requiring cable companies to list people with telephone information. Here in New York, I believe the default carrier is Verizon of New York, what was it? AT&amp;T, New York Telephone, 9X, Bell Atlantic, Verizon Now, but the same corporation, of I would like to urge Zivelman that you and your staff and commissioners do something about getting the cable and wireless companies to be required to list people in the telephone directory, whether it is a hard copy, whether online, or whether it is oral information. I believe the law requires oral information, and the printed directory is just an accommodation. But it's getting smaller and smaller, and people are less connected today than they were perhaps a generation and a half ago. People used to be proud of Alexander Gray Bell's invention, or Elijah Gray, to see their name in print, there it was in the phone book. But now, you can't find people, although Verizon does say they'll list anyone for a fee, and that's, and the commission properly ruled as a condition of having landline service with the regional Bell operating company, you get a listing in the directory. But there's got to be some way to avoid that federal issue from that basically put in by that gutless wonder in the White House, William Clinton, of deregulation, "Oh, you can't touch things," but requiring any company, whether it's cable or wireless, if they provide essentially telephone service in any manner or form, even SMS, you know, texting, to list people with telephone information. Furthermore, I want to remind you that the basis of determining rates is how many subscribers you could reach. Your monthly charge for service was based on how many phone numbers you could reach, and we're all... In rural New York, you paid less per month for a basic charge for service than you did say in one of the boroughs of New York City. But since the telephone directory itself and the electronic database is shrinking, 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 maybe you should direct that the charge for information of many of these carriers, which is as much as $3 for a listing, be rolled back because there aren't that many listings available. One of your former employees, Alan Bousback, do any of you recall his name? The chair, who is the head of your Communications Division, also suggested, this is a side comment, and I have finished then, that you order Verizon to stop the use of the universal 1-800 Verizon number and establish a separate number, as they used to be, for repair, and especially when we hear people tonight complaining they can't get through, they can't get relief, but Verizon should segregate out the calls to repair from everything else that they're handling, whatever they're handling, if they're handling anything. You hear people say, "I can't... They put in a request for a repair, they don't get it," or this or that, or a billing problem. Bousback felt it should go back to something like the old 611 for repair. Remember that? 411 information, 211 for long distance. We do have something like that, but it's not telephone-related. That's the 511 and 711. But think of that. People can't get through to Verizon, and Verizon, especially under this chairman, doesn't really want to hear from anyone. So consider that. Require them to set up a separate number for people with complaints on telephone service. Billing is something else. So again, the ambit of all of this is telecommunications, communication, and you should require that any company, again, wireless, or by cable, or by semaphore, or carrier pigeon, whatever it be, require people to be listed because you cannot find people. And the older people say, "Oh, I'm older. I don't need any new friends." The younger people have cellphones, and everyone has my number, but they don't. And what I think that is impairing the economic viability of doing business when you can't reach people. Thank you.
Did you still have a question?
Will Calgrove was supposed to be here. Unfortunately, he was not. With your permission, I'll make a statement that he asked me to submit in writing to him.
We still have his card, but your name?
My name? My name is George Litten, L-I-T-T-O-N. I'm president of West Side Co-op. Will Calgrove, who is at the office of Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, had asked us to submit a written statement which he intended to present. Undoubtedly, some emergency occurred this evening. He was not here. Let me just preface by saying, I think you guys are fantastic. To sit through what you have sat through this evening and pay attention is amazing, and to your credit. A suggestion I would make for future hearings, limit public oratory to two minutes and have people submit written statements. Okay. This is a letter I submitted to Mr. Calgrove a few days ago. I should appreciate your bringing the following facts to the attention of the hearing. As president of 91 Central Park West Corp., a co-op at 69th Street and Central Park West, I am deeply concerned with the security and quality of life of 90 families who call it home. Among our residents are leaders in government, media, business, and the arts, as well as many elderly, all of whom rely on dependable telephone service. Verizon egregiously fails to provide that service. Since late February 2015, there have been over 30 separate Verizon repair calls to our building. Residents remain without phone service for days until Verizon crews are dispatched. In 2013, Verizon's maintenance failures resulted in Phantom self-generated 9/11 emergency calls, needlessly bringing police to the building at all hours of the night. This blatant waste of limited resources undermines police ability to respond to true emergencies. Regrettably, last week, Phantom 9/11 calls resumed, disrupting residents' peaceful occupancy and again wasting police resources. To compound Verizon's breach of trust, this week, one of our residents reported that confidentiality of her telephone conversations was compromised. Calls dialed to her 212-873 number are routed to a stranger's 212-787 number on West 70th Street. Calls from her number show an incorrect caller ID, and she's unable to activate a credit card or do any business that requires valid telephone caller ID. Some of Verizon's own repair staff, off the record, attribute the aforementioned problems to Verizon's failure to maintain its copper network in anticipation that it will be replaced by new Fios network. Certainly Verizon's public service license does not give it that right. Verizon should be held responsible, forced to provide dependable service, and to pay penalties for damages incurred.
Yes.
Failing which, its public service license should be terminated. Thank you.
I think you took two and a half minutes, sir. Do we have anyone else that filled out cards that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Okay. Hearing none. I think we're at the conclusion of this evening's public statement hearing. We want to thank you all for coming, and we'll go off the record, close it at this time.
Thank you all for being here, too.